Good morning, everyone. Beautiful Kamloops morning. Thank you to our Kamloops directors for arranging this for us. Call to order this committee of the whole meeting of the Thompson Nicola Regional District for Wednesday, November the eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district. And today we are situated on the Kamloops to Shakwetmak territory, situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shakwetmak Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Kamloops to Shakwetmak and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. You should have had distributed to you the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Friday, October thirteenth. These will be adopted at our next meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting, I understand? Someone?
Yes, Chair, we apologize to just clerical error. They weren't included on the agenda. So I think the next Committee of the Hall is scheduled for December. They'll be brought forward for adoption at that point.
Thank you very much. And with that, I am going to pass this over to our corporate officer, Mr. Lewis, to give us an overview of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, what it is, what it isn't, and what we can expect for the next few hours.
Thank you, Chair. It'll be a rip-roaring morning of fun. At least that's what Ms. Fox assures me. So we just wanted to just set some expectations and make sure that everyone's in the same place on the Committee of the Whole Meeting. As you're likely aware, the purpose of this is to give you the chance to go really in-depth on a specific issue. In this case, the five-year financial plan of two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight. You will not be making any final decisions today. So this is your chance to really ask questions of all of the departments. It's an opportunity to tell us that we're moving in the wrong direction and to basically, if you choose that, or to say that you endorse the directions we're moving in, I should emphasize, you can say that all is good. But essentially, we wanted to tell you, this is an opportunity to learn about proposals, to quiz staff. And if you want to see minor changes, or if there's general assent, something needs to happen, staff can essentially just hear your comments and come back with further proposals in the future. We don't need to adopt this at the board level for a number of months yet. But that said, if there are major changes that you would like to see made, or there's a clear division, say, half the board feels one way, half another way, then that's the situation when we would actually want to move as second as our natural formal votes to determine, say, if you want us to do significant extra work. But generally speaking, this is your opportunity over the next few hours to make comments, make suggestions. And we are, we're hopeful that you'll find it informative and educational. But as I said, this is the beginning, by no means the end of the budget process.
Thank you very much, and I am now going to hand over to CEO Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Roden, and good morning to everybody. It's a little loud, Randy. So good morning. Thanks for being here today and participating in this. I'm looking forward to a productive day with some great information, dialogue, and discussion. As you'll see in the back of the room, we've got a lot of the staff and the budget managers that are here that, if Carla and I get stumped, we can certainly lean on those experts as well. To start, I need to acknowledge the significant work that went into this process. As you see, it's significantly different than it was last year and continues to improve. I want to thank Carla for all her work on this one. It's been a massive undertaking. I also want to thank the finance team, all of our budget managers, the senior management team, and everyone that played a part in kind of getting us to this point, pulling it forward as a draft budget. And so we really appreciate all their time and effort. We have taken direction and guidance from the Finance Committee. We've taken direction and information from the Board as a whole to shape our budget for two thousand and twenty-four and prepare the draft. We really, I feel like we've really moved the needle in a lot of ways from past years. It's a very professional-looking document, it much improved. We had recent preliminary meetings with all of our EA directors over the last week or so to discuss, to discuss a lot of the individual budgets and highlights from some of the service more in rural, in our rural areas. This was important to allow today's discussion to be a little bit more high-level and not have to dig into some of those unique rural, rural, yet important details. So I guess the big point I wanted to make before we get going here is just the effects of a high, high inflationary environment right now has continued to cause significant issues for us when it comes to building this budget. Looking back on two COVID budgets where we did our best to keep things as low as we possibly could, followed by, you know, increased inflation is causing some, some difficulties. So this year, like last year, it's creating significant issues with respect to cost of goods, services, cost of labor, cost of contracts, and to name a few. Staff have really focused on cutting expenses, so you'll see that as we go through today and really digging in to ensure we're as efficient as possible. As you'll see in our departments, as the departments present, you'll see how we've stepped up and found ways to make the necessary cuts in this challenging environment. The administration continues to focus on the board's strategic plan, and that'll continue to be our focus. And you'll see on the screen, well, there it is right now, so you'll see some of the key points that I wanted to make or am making. But some of those opportunities include balancing workload with resources and overall team capacity. Recruitment, training and development and succession planning is still very critical. We're all fighting for, for staff right now throughout the interior and all over, all over Canada, for that matter. Emergencies continue to impact our work and the way we execute and work and get our work done. Provincial expectations and requirements continue to add work to our staff. We need to continue to play, pay close attention to balance, to, to balance new ideas and new initiatives and requests from directors to ensure we stay on track with the board's strategic plan. We needed to balance reserves and surpluses to reduce taxation where we can, and I know Carla will walk us through those. And staff have taken the opportunity to cut expenses to remove the nice-to-do things and really focus on priorities. So Carla and our team are going to walk you through some of the highlights, some of the, including strengths, opportunities, and things that are affecting our individual departments and how it all rolled up as a whole. These next few years are going to be difficult, and some tough decisions are going to need to be made. Our staff are up for the challenge and will come prepared today to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Carla to get us starting and get us rolling for the day.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board and staff. I, one of the questions I got asked yesterday is if I was going to read line by line the budget to you, and I can't imagine a greater torture. So that is not my plan today. I think the first part, half of the meeting should be fairly exciting to hear from our different departments. And we use a SWOT template to kind of help form the conversation, so we bring you the information similarly. And I think it's a good way to kind of highlight the opportunities that we have and some of the weaknesses and challenges we're facing. So hopefully you find that part really engaging from our team. And of course, I will, my, my real desire is to make sure that with all the budget information that you receive, that you know how to, how to get through it and how to understand it, so that you are informed. I mean, of course, I'm not going to teach twenty-seven of you how to budget. But what I hope to do is that you have the confidence that myself and the team know what we're doing to try and bring our best work forward. And I have been listening to suggestions made all the way through and have tried to weave those into how we're bringing information forward and some of the decisions that we've been making. So I'm going to be excited to introduce what I think is a thoroughly crafted five-year financial plan. It's really a roadmap that represents our commitment and hard work to your strategic planning, working to address many of the issues that were and are before us, always keeping in mind the impact to the region. Before delving into the intricacies of the plan, I believe it's crucial to shed some light on the economic landscape. And I think CEO Hildebrand did, did a pretty good job. The, we're continuing to have pressures with high contract costs, equipment costs, and supply costs that, that are affecting our operations. And despite challenges posed by these uncertainties, the TNRD staff have remained steadfast, really working through the fall to find cost reductions and creative solutions to bring forward a budget that was reasonable in this climate. And that we've had to make some hard decisions where reserves are concerned. But hopefully, what we present will show that we're, we're kind of dedicating to making sure we have sustainable services. It's not merely a document of numbers and projections. It is a wholesome plan to address a lot of the issues that we are facing. Our way forward, I think, is to continue to collaborate and work together to bring forward a shared vision and a commitment to excellent service delivery. This work has been fueled by such an amazing work team, one of the best I've worked with, that work with passion and a desire to continue to build on a great culture that I think has been created here at the TNRD. And I think that's important because we're here early and we're here with, with what I think good work, because we're working really well together with the board and as a team. So I think that's important to mention. Our role as a staff is to make sure that you feel we're delivering the desired services to your constituents at reasonable levels while ensuring sustainability and affordability. Further, I hope after today, you'll understand how to navigate through the information that's been provided to you and have all your unanswered questions answered. So we're going to start by going through each of the departments. I think, can I move this myself? So I want to start out by, what my main goal in the beginning is to make sure you understand what's changing. The solid waste and recycling contract costs increases were brought to the board. So the board, I, I hope it's familiar and in mind that those contract costs went up by over thirteen percent, really impacting our service delivery and costs there. There was an approval of a cybersecurity resource, a new position, so you will see that addition in the budget. We have every year wage increases, and we have a negotiated wage increase within the budget. The board supported an increase to the regional grant aid program. So it went from twenty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, so thirty percent, or thirty thousand dollar increase. And then this was a slide from yesterday that I should have edited. But the, in the policy, there is a recommended CPI increase for the, the directors. And we're going to bring that conversation forward in regards to that. We met with the, the EA directors yesterday and have some, some desires and recommendations that we'd like to bring forward to the board. That will have some impact on costs, but you will be able to have a, a discussion specifically on the pay for directors and policy, the reimbursement and remuneration policy. Some other notable changes just is within the state of the economy, the contract costs and goods and services. We have, where it made sense, put a three percent inflation on some of the costs, like insurance and utilities. The, the people and culture, although we've, we've come up with a new solution yesterday. Previously, the board supported one FTE, half payroll, half finance. And this will be moving to an FTE of all working in the payroll department. So it isn't a, an additional FTE that will be required at this time. And finance is going to continue with, with casual support. And if required, we'll bring you a decision for additional FTE if, if that's what we think is necessary. So the increase in the transfers to reserves, so what you would, it, it might be noticeable if you get into it at this level, but we've really pulled the capital budget out of the operating budget. And in doing that, we have to indirectly fund the capital through transfer, transfers to reserves through the operating budget. So there has been some increases there to deal with making sure that five-year, ten-year long-term plan is funded. So we have made some adjustments there that you'll see and, and we'll talk to. And further, a real attempt to make sure the surpluses were at a, at a more sustainable level. So that meant we all looked at our expenses, where we could reduce, we produced. And if there was capital being carried forward in surplus amounts, it was transferred to reserves to support those projects. Now, remember, I'm just giving you the high-level detail. When, in the afternoon, when we get into the fi, the financial plan detail, I'll kind of pick out those spots for you where you can see some of that information in more detail. So worth mentioning is in two areas. In order for us to bring you a reasonable incremental increase year over year to taxation, because of the cost increases, solid waste services, the operating costs are right now being subsidized by a large transfer from reserves. And over time, we are gradually bringing down that reserve transfer to make sure the service is sustainable on its own. But if we did not do that, the, the tax rate increase would have been substantial. So we didn't want to bring you something that was what you guys felt would probably be unreasonable at first glance. So we've put this solution kind of forward, hoping that you guys are amenable to that. Solid waste and development services both had large reserve pots that were meant for operating fluctuations and to support those services. So in both of those departments, we, you will see that helping to reduce the impact to taxation. And of course, in development services, they spent a lot of years reaping the rewards of good economic growth, and they were bringing in substantial revenues above budget. So that money was going into the surplus. So you'll see in the reserve schedule, these amounts of money drawing down those reserves over time. So from there, we go to the department overviews for administration. And of course, just to, to torture you right off the hop, you get me again to start you off. So I'm, I'm going to just quickly go through the finance department and then turn it over to one of my peers. I'm not going to go through each one of these. However, I've mentioned some of them already. I will talk about the notable ones. This year in finance has been a year of change. The first three months I was without a finance manager, and now I have Aaron on board, and we have a full complement of staff right now, which is great going into the year-end and the audit. So we've, we've dedicated staff right off the hop from finance this year to help out in the EOC, which went extremely well. We're doing, when I stepped in, we still had claims from two thousand and twenty-one and the previous emergency that we're, we're just starting to, to wrap all that up now with the dedicated support. So we were working without a budget in a timely manner, being updated into our financial system. That is something that we have and we can implement five years of budget now, the way we've changed the budget system. The, we've done a huge shift in payments to electronic fund transfers. So we are really trying to eliminate checks altogether and which might seem like, oh, lots of businesses do that. We didn't really do that here. So that, that's been a big shift. We decreased the payment turnaround time from when I got here, it was about ninety days to two to three weeks. We try and hit two weeks, but sometimes there's unforeseen circumstances. So that, that was a great accomplishment from the team in the finance department. We've done the facilities upgrade here at the building and, which was really a great success. We, we relocated some of the library to floor two. We renovated and created an EOC space, which worked wonderfully through the summer for our EOC group. So that was one of the things that we did successfully. One of the other things I really think is great is we've improved the grant tracking. So we actually just over the last week have a list going back over, you know, three, four years of all the grants that we've achieved. And, and I'd like to at some point be able to bring that information forward. So you guys can really feel proud about the work that Ms. McMillan and the team are doing at capturing grants. Because as you go through the finances, you'll see a huge reliance on infrastructure is grant funding and achieving those grants. So I think adding Austin to our team, he's overseeing that and helping link finance to, to the, the grant program. We're seeing real great uptake from that. The regional grant and aid process and policy, we updated as well as the community works policy. So that was a really good achievement over the year. That's provided more clarity and consistency to staff when they're trying to apply that. And we just went through our first regional grant intake using the ranking criteria. So you guys will get to see that kind of come forward with not, oh, here's twenty grants and they all want money, you guys decide. So we've really put a great criteria and a team together to bring some of that information forward to you, to help you make decisions around that better. And another huge piece of work that's still being worked on is the implementation of the ten-year capital plan. So when we previously presented the budget to you, there was a, a five-year plan, but really the capital showed up in the first year and a little bit in the second year. And then we didn't have capital in the plan after that. So we've created a consistent template across the organization that everybody's kind of input into. And that'll really help support our movement with our asset management planning as well. So some of the challenges we had, we ended up being short resourced right in the beginning of the year. So we had an audit delay, we had a delay in our five-year financial plan completion. And to us, wannabe perfectionists in finance, these things felt really horrible. But the province was great. We just notified them. And as soon as we were able, everything was submitted in a timely manner. The system that we have in finance is outdated. I have given it a year. You'll see embedded in the report some of my complaints about the system. And meeting with other CAOs last week, at least six other CAOs are having the same complaints with the, they use the same financial system that we do and the lack of support, the lack of updating. And we are running into lots of issues around their IT, the cybersecurity that they have, and it's no longer up to standard. So there's nothing currently in the budget for a financial system, but I have definitely mentioned it to a number of people that this is something that I, I think is going to really be in front of us over the next couple of years. And I can tell you, it's not an undertaking anyone really wants to do. I think we really have to do it at this point. So the EOC pressures, some of you had heard from us previously, but the EOC ran wonderfully. They do an excellent job here, but it does rely on a number of key members of our staff. So some of the delays in bringing some of the work to the Finance Committee this fall and a few different things have really been delayed by the EOC taking a number of our key staff and not being able to bring that work forward in advance. The other part of that is when there's an active EOC, our staff, when they work overtime, actually get reimbursed for that. The problem for us is most of the finance work happens after the EOC active status is closed. So the staff that, in my finance department, that work after that period of time, don't get reimbursed. So they're either working overtime and we're paying for that, or it's senior staff that are putting in extra time. And it's taking away from the work we can do on our regular day-to-day. I think that's important to note, as the province starts to download more of these EOC costs that is one we already bear and have suffered from. So, and obviously, the lack of turnover has created resource delays in, in work. But I feel like we're on the cusp of something great with our team. We've got great additions to our team. So I think that over the next year, where we've been telling some directors, they have lots of great new ideas coming forward. And we're like, sorry, we can't do that. We can hardly keep up. I feel like we're coming to the cusp where we can start really delivering on some of those newer things that, that the board's looking to achieve. So ongoing concerns, I'm not going to, again, go through this line by line, but we're struggling maintaining our current service levels with cost impacts. So we've done work to try and look at the, the, the inflation. The work, the new work requested has really been hard to achieve with the lack of resources. So some of the, the things going on is just to make sure that we're proactively making sure we have staff available. So I'm, I am keeping a casual pot of money over the next year until we can determine if EOC and some of these extra things my staff have to do continue. Because as soon as I have to draw on my full-time staff, we're backed up somewhere else. So we're just trying to, to look at that. We're also have a focus on asset management and prioritizing that with the new business support group that we have. And we're working with the board to ensure we have reserve funds to support long-term planning. Because they were in one plan, we didn't really have a, a organized focus of moving money into the reserves to make sure there was funds there. That, I have to educate the, and work with the departments, and we also have to work with the board and try and come up with a strategy to consistently understand what level of capital investment the board wants to achieve every year. And then make sure that we are working with you to make sure the funds are there and that grant funds are allocated, like Community Works, like we've committed to UBCM, that all the, the gas tax funds will have projects that they're committed to and that the, the Community Building Fund will support those projects as well. So there's tons of opportunity. Like I said, I feel like we're just on the cusp of great things. I feel like we've, we've been able to bring and show you guys a bit of what we've been able to achieve with working with communications, your taxation documents being a little bit more appealing to the public and to be able to work with them with a really succinct budget document. Now, I know that the two thousand and twenty-four budget package was additional, and I'm trying to reduce the amount you get. But I know that there's people that want to dive into the detail. And I know that there's people that want to see the summary and want to understand what's happening twenty-three to twenty-four, what's a change. So I've given you a real focus document that's more at a high level. That's what we'll go through this afternoon and dive into the detail if you have questions. But I'm hoping and I'm hearing good things about the taxation document that's being helpful to the electoral area directors. This also gives municipalities, it gives your CFO this information earlier than they have had it before so that they can build it into your plans within your municipalities. So I, I think that's great. It's way ahead of where we were previously. So working with an experienced team and having the right people on the seats in the bus right now is really helping us make some really good movements forward in system optimization. So hopefully, in a year or two, if we're able to in, improve our finance system, it'll help with budgeting and capital planning and asset management. And so I'm, I'm trying to take a big look at, at all of those things together and not just try and have a short-term view and fix little things at once. That is my finance spiel, and hopefully these guys keep you awake and entertained until I have to come up again. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And have you all determined in what order you're coming up? Did you draw lots or? All right. Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So speaking now about corporate and legislative services, which includes, so legislative, IT, and GIS. And unfortunately, sorry, I'll get into this then. So the strengths is where we're launching off. Makes sense with a SWOT analysis. Most of what we do in corporate and legislative services is people-related. We bring, basically, we have people who are sitting in offices, processing agendas, minutes, helping with reports written, et cetera. And so one of the things which is absolutely fantastic is that since writing this, we've gone from low vacancies to no vacancy. At this point, we do have a fully fledged department in the legislative side of things, which is fantastic. And I have been very impressed since I started here just a few weeks ago with the quality of staff that, that I came, I came in to find. They are extremely good at what they do. There has been a good foundation of training and organizational support for my staff. And also I feel for you as a largely newly-elected board last year. That said, we will be going into, there's potential for always improvement as well. Contract management processes, I was impressed when I came here about the tracking systems that are in place for making sure that we know what all of our obligations are, all of our agreements are, and making sure that staff follow the appropriate processes to make sure everything is done properly. That said, it is also one of the potential opportunities for improvement because we're, at the moment, we're doing things through because at the moment, we're doing things through email, spreadsheets, et cetera. And so there's always questions over whether or not we can do them even better. And then the last one, I wish I didn't have to say this as a strength, but we are good here. We have a good listing of all our active bylaws, and sadly, not every local government can say that. So I was very happy to find that. That said, as I said, everything is not perfect in, in this world. In particular, we have a lot of outdated systems. So as I said, we're doing a lot of things by, say, email, tracking them in spreadsheet. We don't have automatic systems that can immediately say, okay, this has happened, therefore that leads to X Y Z. We have to rely on staff and filling in charts and forms to manually note, okay, this is the thing we need to do. And so that's always a risk that things will potentially go wrong on that. Similarly, one of the projects that we're looking at next year is records management. We know that there are issues, and again, this is widespread across local governments, of discovering what our records are, making sure that we have everything that we're meant to, and that we've destroyed the things we're no longer supposed to have. Anything which is supposed to not exist after a certain number of years, and sometimes you'll find it hanging around decades later. That's a problem in both directions, so we do need to make sure that our records management is brought up, brought up to scratch and fulfills all of our obligations there. Also, and to an extent, I kind of like that there's a lower than could be possible understanding of legislative processes. It does keep me in business, but that said, that both at a staff and a elected member level, a lot of the conversations I have are related to, okay, I understand why you want to do that. Unfortunately, here's the sub clause of a sub clause that tells you that that's illegal. And so I'm looking at opportunities to improve training and understanding so that we can have more productive conversations in that way, and just make sure that we can serve you as elected members better. And opportunities. So one of the things that we're going to be doing differently next year, and we've just started rolling this out, is our new business support division. And this brings together some existing staff, so we've reallocated resources. And the idea is that we will be able to look at processes, look at systems, look at challenges across the entirety of the organization, and then find out what's best practice for solving them. What have other local governments done to improve efficiency, to save money, to make things work better, to improve transparency? I know they've begun having conversations with all of the departments to find out what their priorities were. So for example, when they came to corporate and legislative, I said that it was records management for me, that we have to find, and we have to find ways to move forward on that. And so the business support department is going to be looking at ways that we can make sure we meet those obligations. And they say they're having those conversations across the entire organization. There are examples in other local governments of, say, doing things better, there are mutual challenges that we face. And so our manager for that department, for example, she regrets she couldn't be here, she's at an asset management conference today. So as Carla said, that's again, one of the important projects that they're working on. Fresh eyes to revise processes, as I said, I've no only been here a few weeks. And indeed, I think the longest serving member of my legislative team has been in their current post for just over six months. So we are, we are a newly put together team. And this is an opportunity to actually look at how things are done. And to say, just because things have been done in particular ways in the past, doesn't mean that has to be how it is going forward. And working with the people that we have in place, any legislative changes in the last few years, the board that we currently have, and finding out what's, again, the best way that we can work for you. And then new systems, this goes partially to the business support division and also partially to public transparency and accountability. We want to make sure that, say, when we're passing new bylaws, residents know about it. We want to make sure that if there's information which is going out to the public, if we are doing things differently, that the residents understand and appreciate that we are fulfilling our legislative obligations and also making sure that as residents, they can be involved in things. So again, it's just, we're hoping that we can move forwards. And local government isn't particularly popular right now, it's unfortunate but true. And so we're always going to be looking for ways that we can show people that we're doing everything we can to earn their trust and make sure they know we're working for them. Threats, I think you'll be hearing quite a lot today about rising pressures and costs. This goes to issues around staff, it goes to, say, software solutions we're purchasing. It goes to any infrastructure that we, that we need, whether it's human, physical, technological. It's going to cost more this year than it would have cost last year, and it'll cost more again next year. It's one of the serious issues that we face as an organization. As I mentioned a couple of times, we do have a lack of a formal record structure, and we're going to be working on that. At the moment, that does place us potentially subject to, to risks if, say, F O I requests are filed. Whether or not we're confident that we're answering them correctly, that's a risk for, for us. And we want to improve our records management systems to make sure that we know we are hitting all of those targets as we are required to do. And then desirable staff, as I said, we just, we've now got a fully staffed department. And they are, in my opinion, at least, highly competent. This poses risks, local government is, at this point, I'm sure any of the municipal directors in particular will know, extremely difficult to find qualified competent staff in a lot of communities. And we're blessed to have the team that I think we do. But also that means that other communities will sometimes be looking at them and going, you represent something we'd like to have. So we, we are genuinely concerned and want to make sure that everyone feels acknowledged and appreciated. We are looking to increase our, our capacity in things. So for example, one of the things you'll be hearing about today is a new cybersecurity position that's in the, the I T division. And again, that's a difficult position to fill because there are so few people who are able and willing to do that role. And so if and when we successfully fill it, we know that there will be other people going after whoever, whoever it is we find. So those are some of the biggest issues that we're facing at the moment in corporate and legislative, and now I think I'll hand things over to Amanda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning. I oversee payroll, human resources and communications and marketing teams. I think about a SWOT analysis, and for me, the, the easy answer is really to write, write people under each slot. So that's what you're gonna get. So I think our strengths, our biggest strength is definitely our people here at the T N R D. Despite labor market challenges, we have had increased vacancy rates, increased recruitment activity, but we have been primarily successful at filling the majority of our positions. So I'm proud to say that we're maintaining our staffing levels. I think we've talked about this in prior committee meetings, our average age of T N R D staff is kind of low to mid forties. We've already hit the bubble of retirement, so we're in that phase now, we're a bit ahead of the curve, which will be definitely appreciated in the years to come. Another reason I think we have great success with our people is our culture, they go hand in hand together. The last few years, we've really focused on developing trust, collaboration, and working towards engagement and safety with staff. This has really enabled us to continue a focus on service, especially without our human resources, payroll and communications and marketing team. You'll see there that service primarily extends internally for a lot of our work, but also externally, our communications and marketing team, Colton and Mike have done an amount of work putting together new tools for community engagement, consultation and reporting. Our website is a reflection of that, our communities pages, and especially the taxpayer information you see attached today to all the budget documentation. So huge success for that team. And, and all of this enables us to continue building relationships within the T N R D and with our external stakeholders. So we could see that as a huge part of our success. It's gonna be like a broken record player soon for you guys, but challenges, labor market shortages, absolutely. There are less people in the labor market and more jobs, less skilled, more highly skilled jobs we need to fill. So there is a widening gap there, so far we are doing okay, but it's really delicate. We need to remain competitive in terms of compensation benefits, the expectations of staff are increasing. The expectations of people are increasing, the cost of living is higher, how can we pay more, how can we offer more benefits? So challenging in that arena. We also have a lot of current bargaining going on with our collective agreement, successful with B C G E U this year, but looking to start doing that with K P in the coming months. Another thing that's big for us is our H R I S system, so we have an outdated H R I S system. We are tracking training with Excel sheets, we are manually entering how many employees we have, what training they've completed and not completed. That's a practice that hasn't changed probably for twenty years, we need something better. This one, limited changing means to engage with constituents, I'm referring to, especially in Calmups, the closure of Calmups this week for our marketing and communication staff, how do we engage and connect with the public? It's changing, so a focus on that work in that arena there. And I think I wanted to just expand on a few of the challenges specific to staffing that I see for the T N R D. Couldn't figure out the best way to format it in terms of language, but a significant reliance on limited resources. So a lot of the amazing services that we're able to provide are provided by small departments of staff. You know, so you've got one or two people that are really experts in this area that are delivering water systems, solid waste recycling, emergency services. Is all built on very small teams, so we hold a lot of strength in those few people. We need those people, so if they leave, what risk does that present to us? And so I think that's just a huge challenge that we don't talk about enough. We also have increasing expectations and requests for work, and of course, the E O C. We've, we've talked about this, but it does take away time from our people. Additional threats, rounded inflation, recruitment, I've talked about these, so I'm not going to really expand on them a lot there. And increasing regulation and requirements for workplace programs, so this is a piece we haven't really touched on. It's been on a few of the slides that I've noticed coming through, but really the downloading of government onto local government staff is ever increasing. That happens in our arena for human resources and safety, it's happening for emergency, it's happening for building, development, planning. I mean, this is a theme across the board, there is more and more expectations on our staff, not just from the public and from the board and from each other, but as regulated by other levels of government. So how do we continue to increase and meet those needs? Making sure they're not whispering about me. I didn't, I did it backwards, I didn't end on threats, because we want to end on something more positive, hopefully. But talking about building upon our strengths, again, so are people, right? How can we collaborate, how can we develop that, how can we provide programs and mentorship and cross training and collaboration? Within all of our communities across the regional district, I think there's a huge advantage there for us in terms of succession planning, talent, talent development, learning development, mentorship. Those are areas that we need to focus on in order to sustain and engage our services and our staff. In order to do that, we need more time, and I think our best way to do that is to get some systems that actually work and do automated tasks for us, so we can focus on the more valuable people, learning, development and planning areas. I think that's my, my chat. Well, Jamie.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Vera is up to the plate.
Right, morning, everyone. Buckle up, we're going into the operations division. So just a reminder, the operations division includes kind of all the services that were out there in the community, kind of providing the, the direct services. So that includes the fire protection, solid waste and recycling, utility services and community and emergency services department. So the managers of those departments are all behind me as well as a lot of our management team, so I just want to reiterate what was said already is that, you know, their people behind me are the ones who really are actually out there on the front lines, working with their staff, delivering these services. They're the real experts in what they're doing, I'm just here, I'm, I'm, I just play one on TV, they're the ones in real life actually getting the work done. So, and I say that because, and they're also here because if you stump me with questions, they'll be able to jump in and, and help. And just before I jump into it as well, as, as I kind of go through this, this SWOT that everyone's been doing, not gonna have time to cover kind of everything we've done, so don't think this is a comprehensive list, but I actually really appreciate that Carla, you know, arranged the, the schedule this way for us to kind of do the self reflection and go through it. I think it's a good reminder for, for us internally to go through a staff of this process and for the board to be reminded of on an annual basis of what did we actually do? And what, what are we, what's coming down the pipe? Especially because within the context of this discussion around budget, these, and, and when I put together these slides, I was thinking, what, what has impacted our budget previously and what's going to be impacting our budget moving forward? So keeping all of these things in mind, even though we're not looking at dollars and cents right now, it's all within context of what we're going to be diving into this afternoon. So we'll start off with fire protection services, so Jason Tomlin, sitting behind me, he's our manager of fire protection services. There's currently two staff and one, one vacancy within this building, T N R D staff that are in that department. But the key function of that department is overseeing the, the operation and administration of the nine T N R D administered fire departments. Plus, there's also a lot of work involved with just administration of our seven contractors, where we work with the municipalities represented in this room, many of them to provide fire protection services to T N R D areas. So those ones were not directly operationally involved in, but from a contract administration point of view. The other thing that's captured out of that department is our nine one one dispatch system, which I'll, I'll talk about as well. So strengths and accomplishments, regional fire smart program, this was exciting. So first year that we had this grant funded program, for those who remember this, kind of was endorsed by the electoral area directors in twenty twenty two, and it came to fruition with receiving the grant funding of seven hundred thousand dollars this year. And that's annual funding towards the operation of this program. So the focus this year was our community wildfire resiliency plans, which were just wrapped up in that process as well as education outreach. We had a full time fire smart coordinator on staff this year who's, who's still with us, Dan Punk. And happy to report that moving forward next year, we're expanding that program. So we're looking at increasing from one coordinator to three fire smart coordinator positions. And, and looking to launch the very popular landowner rebate program for fire smarting within communities. So stay tuned for more information on that. Regional fire training officer, so that position's actually currently vacant, just had a vacancy in the last month. But that program is new, that position was filled just a year and a half ago. And the idea with that is sort of shifting, providing more direct support to our T N R D fire departments by having that regional training officer working with the fire chiefs and supporting their, their regional training or training within their own fire departments, and that's often a challenge. So when we, when we're, when we look to repost that, we may look at, at, at sort of tweaking the, the roles and responsibilities, but this has been a success. Especially from the, the individual fire chief's point of view, having that support from here, our, our main office. Community emergency preparedness fund grants, this is the first year these have come available administered through U B C M. So we received thirty thousand dollars per fire department, and that grant is up again this year. So depending on the department, it goes to different things, everything from pumps and hoses to P P E and other, other gear that's needed for each of those departments. And we've already actually came to the last board meeting, a resolution to apply for that grant once again. Provincial deployments, so we had a number of fire departments that were deployed this year, and I mentioned that, not only because we're out there, you know, assisting and supporting our, our neighbors within the province, but it's also a revenue source for the local fire department, so where we have the resources to deploy, it could come straight back to additional funding into those departments. And new firefighter recruits, so this has been an awesome success this year. We have a new fire department in Monte Creek that's been training under the Pritchard Fire Department. We have now, we're at nineteen new firefighter recruits that are from that community, and that'll be operating out of the Pritchard Department, but this is building up of, of the new Monte Creek Department. That brings our total number now, we're up to a hundred ninety two firefighters that the T N R D has on its. Um, that brings our total number now, we're up to a hundred ninety-two firefighters that the T N R D has on its payroll on our staff. So they're often, um, I hate to say it this way, but often maybe forgotten because they're not in this building and they're out there in those communities. But there's a hundred ninety-two of them that we're responsible for that are representatives out there in the communities. Few other strengths and accomplishments. Uh, so our tour of the North Thompson Valley, you saw all of these facilities, the Blackpool Fire Hall, Avonby and McClure Hall. So significant capital upgrades at all three of those facilities. And we had a ribbon cutting at two of those and McClure Hall, the upgrade that you saw underway is um, kind of nearing the final touches in that stages. And the other big one is this Loon Lake Fire Hall that uh, is uh, now just completed. Um, we'll be doing a grand opening and open house that, you know, at that facility in the spring. Um, and this was a, a long time coming, but this is an awesome asset to the community, more centrally located. And uh, this is, I, I'm glad I got a picture up here because this is now kind of going to be our template moving forward, more or less of, of what our fire departments are, are going to look like. This has been kind of su- success story in terms of design. Um, it's a simple design, um, but uh, really effective. And uh, they're happily moved in there. Now we're putting the final touches on, on moving in. Oh, weaknesses and challenges. So I mentioned the fire, sorry, the nine fire departments that were administering from this office and the, the manager and two staff that are doing that. So there's definitely an administration workload here. Um, this also comes as, you know, in this day and age, the amount of uh, paperwork, administration, tracking, um, that's required, um, is a lot different than it was in the old days with, you know, these independent volunteer fire departments. And I say that because um, we're relying on these community members who are part of these departments and they're signing up to be there for their community, not signing up to do a nine-to-five office job. So we're trying as much as possible to sort of support that work that's required, that's on the individual chiefs and their assistant chiefs in those fire departments to do that in-house. Uh, that obviously takes um, work on our side as well. Uh, the seventy mile house fire protection area, uh, the board was aware that we did a uh, a feasibility study there and just had a community meeting uh, a month ago, or I guess six weeks ago now. Um, we did present the findings of that study to the community. Uh, unfortunately, the uh, economic impact to just simply the cost of that service, um, was so great that the community is not in favor of moving forward to it. So it's, I mentioned that as a, as a, as a challenge because it, it's, it's tough to be the messenger when we're going there and, and we have our, our policy of what our fire departments have to look like and the minimum standards. And, and we did everything we could to propose, you know, the, the leanest budget possible. Uh, but at the end of the day, the actual taxation impact was um, you know, triple what any of the other fire protection areas are in the T N R D. And it's simply a matter of how much assessment, how many properties are there? Um, and so this kind of leads into the um, the, the notion that you, you're out there that, you know, T N R D is not supporting certain areas or abandoning certain areas. Um, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but I just wanted to note that as, as a challenge because we, we hear it often and, and we're um, you're just aware of it and sensitive to it. Um, I mentioned as a, as a success that we had the firefighter recruitment, but I also want to mention that as a, as a challenge as well, that it's ongoing to uh, recruit and retain firefighters in these communities. Um, and, and that's something we're looking into, which I'll actually speak to a lot in opportunities. Nine-one-one dispatch, uh, that's something again that actually that we'll be speaking about in more detail at a committee, the whole meeting in December. Um, but uh, the, the short version of that story is our, our secondary dispatches or firefighting dispatch uh, system that the T N R D is responsible for, for dispatching, not just T N R D fire departments, but all the municipal departments outside of Camloops. Uh, that infrastructure hasn't really been looked at in about twenty-five years since it was initially put in. I, I shouldn't say looked at. There's been basic maintenance and up, and, and upkeep, but there hasn't been any upgrades or improvements to it. So um, there'll be a report coming to the committee, the whole around that in December. Uh, area M and N fire protection, I mentioned that because there was a uh, letter that came to this board uh, fairly recently um, from some residents in that area. And I, the, the challenge that I'm mentioning there, it has to do with uh, our fire protection areas. Again, part, in part by nature of the fact that they're, they're different sizes and there's different amount of assessment contributing into that, have very differing um, taxation levels. So in this area, M and N, where we contract with the city of Merritt, um, we had uh, significant changes in costs where their, their costs did increase significantly, um, and, and residents are feeling the impact of that. Um, although the, the cost of their protection is still far lower than other areas. Um, but it is, uh, it challenges the perception of, of what people are willing to pay for fire protection uh, seems to vary uh, across um, in different areas. Uh, and so on that line, limited budget is always another challenge that we're dealing with because our fire protection areas are fairly small, um, small amounts, small changes in budget and operating costs impact uh, individual taxpayers directly and, and significantly. So looking at cap- capital cost replacements, operating costs with inflation and, and just in generally increasing demand and expectations from the public, all of that comes with an additional cost. Uh, so things like the expectation to um, do first responder as well as fire protection and what's cost related to that. Um, those are just common themes that are, that we're hearing about. Threats, um, a big one are possible changes to legislation uh, in the sense of kind of capacity and who's going to pay for it. So uh, around uh, fire inspections, uh, so currently, uh, or historically, regional districts have not been required to do any fire inspections or investigations outside of fire protection areas. There's a possibility of change in that legislation to require that. So what does that look like? And how do we fund that and resource that as a regional district? Um, training standards and equipment, those are kind of always, always changing as they increase. Um, so does cost increase and, and, you know, restrictions within what we're able to do in response in emergency or making sure we have that, meeting that training standard. Uh, I mentioned nine-one-one already, um, but just mentioning in the context of the next generation nine-one-one, what that's going to look like, we're anticipating increased costs for our primary dispatch. So that's the answering service, the fire police ambulance person on the other end of the line. Um, but as well as just secondary dispatch costs through our uh, fire firefighter dispatch. So opportunities, uh, I mentioned one of the challenges was around uh, recruitment and retention. Uh, we will be bringing a, a discussion to the EA Directors Committee uh, in, on November twenty-third about this firefighter remuneration review, but I want to mention it now because it is built into, to the budget that we are um, increasing the remuneration for our firefighters uh, to bring it more to par with um, kind of what's a reasonable expectation for someone to leave their paying job to go respond to an emergency. And they were essentially taking a pay cut for that. Um, so this is uh, the ability for this to uh, essentially have a, of a more fair and equitable uh, payment to the firefighters who are committing significant amount of time just in training and responding to an emergency. So there was a, we'll, we'll talk about it in, in the electoral areas directors meetings uh, in more detail, but we went through a whole process that included all the fire chiefs over the last year and came out with a new operational guide that, that sets these new rates. And the opportunity for new and expanded fire protection areas, uh, there's a lot of people in this room have already, you know, spoken to me about these and, and, and somebody's listed here, we've already taken steps towards increasing the boundaries in Vavenby to include community of Birch Island, um, looking at public ascent process in twenty twenty-four for that, as well as public ascent in Tobiano and Cherry Creek to expand that fire protection area. Um, and some discussion with Skeetches and Indian Van about extending protection there to Thompson Rivers Estates. And there's a number of other meetings and, and discussions that I've been a part of in other areas looking at expanding or, or creating new fire protection areas. Oh, uh, yeah. And the last one there was just a provincial deployments. I mentioned that um, as, as a strength. And so that's an opportunity continuing to go forward, that that's a revenue stream for the fire departments uh, to bring in uh, oh, to, to provide funding for future capital and other equipment that's needed. Moving on, solid waste and recycling, near and dear to my heart. So Adriana Mayu, who's here is our manager of solid waste and recycling. Uh, and there is uh, eight staff uh, in that department and they're based over in Mission Flats. Uh, so they're looking after the twenty-five different landfills and transfer stations throughout the region, uh, as well as we've sandwiched mosquito control. It's also falls into this department as well. It's kind of the, the, the orphan service. Um, not that it doesn't get attention, but it, it, it fits under that department as well. So uh, one of the strengths now, we're, we've already hinted at this uh, in, in the intro to the budget and, and we talked about this when the, these contracts got approved. Uh, so although this is a, a significant increased cost and an impact to the budget, these new operations contracts, I'm still listing that as a strength, um, for a number of reasons. Um, it's long-term, stable, five-year contract and that's in place. We went through a competitive process, got good competitive bids and five bids per different service area. Uh, so we're confident that we're getting good value for money, that we have a good contractor in place so we can continue to work on improvements in operation and service delivery. But also not to be kind of uh, lost in the, I guess, in the operations. We're, we're so busy, especially on the solid waste side, dealing with day-to-day operations. We need to also remember to not lose focus of what's in our solid waste management plan. So um, I'm happy to report that we still are ticking the boxes in what we're trying to do moving forward. So kind of the recent things that we've achieved as a collective, as the T N R D, it, it, that's included in the plan are these, this mandatory recyclables bylaw. We did, we implemented it uh, in twenty twenty-two, and then there's a new revision coming to the board to add more materials to that list uh, shortly. Uh, city Camloops uh, did an awesome job, now implemented their citywide organics collection. And that was uh, a specific item in the plan to, to accomplish. Uh, this board just awarded the year-round household hazardous waste depot that'll service um, all municipalities and, and electoral areas. Uh, and just launched our new school waste reduction curriculum. Challenges, um, uh, are uh, some of you who've been here for a while may remember Dennis Labrie, who was our, our uh, solid waste supervisor. And he always would say, I'll never forget this, he always says, we're, we're in the trucking business. We're not in the landfill business anymore. Um, he was here when we had probably fifteen little local landfills or they weren't even engineered landfills, that there were dumps that we were managing. Uh, and transitioned those over the course of kind of the mid, mid, early nineties through to transfer stations. Uh, and that really did put us into the trucking business. Yes, we still operate landfills, but uh, we're, we're really, we're really trucking waste and recyclables. And, and I'm just noticing, noting that, that's a challenge uh, related to cost of doing business. Um, a- and I think it still is the right way to go, but it's something to be aware of. That's, that's really when you see costs. And especially I, I hear from other people who are in the municipal setting of, you know, how our budget is, or why our budget is so high uh, for solid waste in a regional district. This is why. It's because we're transporting garbage and recyclables two, three, four hundred kilometers in some cases. Uh, competition, that's something that's coming into the regional district now, um, with more and more competing landfills. Um, so our, uh, you'll see in the budget, from a revenue point of view, um, we're about thirty percent funded from disposal fees and seventy percent funded through uh, taxation. So if that shifts because, you know, less waste is going through our landfills, then uh, we still have fixed costs that could be impacted there. Um, so we've heard of a, a few things uh, at the solid waste committee level here of, of proposed second landfill in Cash Creek, um, right next to the existing landfill in Cash Creek, um, as well as we just had a presentation from uh, um, the uh, uh, Grasslands Organics who are operating the new landfill on Tecumlu's uh, land there as well. Inflationary pressures, I think I just listed inflation under all weaknesses and, and challenges because it, it is a reality. It's impacting our budget and it's hard to predict where it's going to go, but we're definitely seeing the, the impact of it. And, and the one more is the provincial legislation and the big one there, um, and I know it's been talked about around this table a lot, is around the um, recycling regulation and the frustration of this separation between commercial recycling versus residential recycling, especially in small communities where there's not opportunities for commercial recycling. Yet we uh, as a, a service provider under Recycle B C uh, can't take in commercial recycling. So there's been a lot of lobby effort from this board and other regional district boards to try to get that changed. Um, there seems to be some hint that they're getting the message, but, but no change in legislation yet. Um, the other, the other risk there i- around legislation is around landfill liability and what that looks like. Um, as, as, you know, environmental regulations are getting more and more stringent, where does that leave us as, as a local government being responsible for our landfills? And how much um, liability are we taking on? And, and not just from a, 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 a liability from the environment point of view, but a, a financial liability of planning for costs in the what-if scenarios. Threats, um, climate change, I probably could put that under a threat to every, every department as well. Um, but in this context, I was thinking specifically around landfill operations and again tied to the environmental uh, liability that we have in operating those landfills. So the more kind of natural disasters, that is definitely a risk. Changes to legislation, um, again, I mentioned that already under weaknesses and challenges. Safety, uh, that's definitely a big concern. Uh, our landfills and transfer stations are very high-risk places for the public and the staff. And I dare to say that the public doesn't appreciate how high-risk they are. Um, I don't know what it is about when you go to the dump, but it seems like you have a different attitude and mentality as soon as you walk in those doors. Um, even speaking with colleagues on the lower mainland, they, they tell me about when, you know, people, they, they're driving to the transportation, the middle of an urban area. And there it seems justified that they could be drinking a beer while they're getting rid of their garbage. But they would never do that anywhere else, but just something about when you have garbage in your truck, that you have a different mentality. So. So I mentioned that around the public side, but then also on the worker side, obviously there's high risks there and, and you're starting to more and more awareness from a work safe point of view, there is around different risks, the, the, the more, um, you know, procedures and practices and we need to have in place, working with our contractor, you know, a big one, big change we had to make, um, which I know still frustrates people is around, you know, the risk of asbestos contaminated material and how we have to handle that. Uh, so I, I only see kind of more of those coming in uh, over the years. Public resistance to user pay model. Um, now we've had the user pay model in place for fifteen years now. Uh, so that, I wouldn't say this is a major problem, but it still does come up uh, from time to time. And uh, and, you know, this, I, I mentioned before, in terms of the budget context, thirty percent of our revenue is from the user fees. So if we change that or get rid of that, then that's all back on taxation. So this board made the decision to try shift portion of those costs to user fees. Um, and we've continued with that model. And, and I think it's, it's been successful and the majority of people have accepted it. But one off, there's, you know, still some frustrated people at, at a scale house. Legal dumping is, is always a threat. Um, I mentioned this because we, I know you as directors hear about it a lot. Um, and I, we fully acknowledge that it is a concern and an issue and we have an active illegal dumping cleanup program where a part of our budget is funding cleanup work. You know, we rely on the Ministry of Environment, the Conservation Officer Service on the enforcement side, but we have budget to assist cleaning up because we know kind of garbage begets garbage. So if you get it and clean it up, then it uh, less likelihood of someone dumping there again. Um, I will say that, and I've, you've probably heard me say this before, um, we had illegal dumping as a problem before. We had disposal fees, um, even in not too distant uh, past, we had a few locations where we were late to implement disposal fees and we still had legal dumping issues there. Um, so I, I don't really subscribe to the fact that charging for garbage is a direct result of illegal dumping. I think it's more of an attitude and mentality and a behavior issue. But I'm sure everyone is uh, is unique out there and why they do it. So opportunities under this one, uh, new technologies for sure. Uh, every time there's new technology coming down the pipe, um, we kind of got our ear to the ground of, of how. um, we kind of got our ear to the ground of, of how that could be implemented. Now, I say that with caution, because often these new technologies are big, grand, you know, implemented for, you know, multi-million, uh, people in, in a municipality, uh, takes a while for some of those technologies to trickle down to be implemented at a small, uh, local level, like in the regional district. Um, but always kind of aware and thinking of that, we have, uh, staff that attend conferences on an annual basis for these kind of things that are being presented. Um, and related to new technologies, always looking for o- other low-cost diversion opportunities. We recently had an opportunity to work with a, a local company in, in Barrier, Lewis Creek, um, who is removing our, our, our yard waste, uh, and wood waste at a lower cost than our current contractor. So any of these one-off opportunities, we're, we're happy to engage in. And, uh, compaction, something coming down the pipe that we're looking at doing, which you'll see in the budget in a few locations, is doing some more compaction with recycling and, and garbage, uh, because like I said, we are in the, in the trucking business, so reducing those home costs. Looking at site improvements that are in the budget as well, so, uh, running water at some of the sites, looking at having, uh, running water bathrooms at a couple sites starting next year, which is exciting, um, and some accessibility improvements, uh, at some of the other sites. Uh, these recycling sheds that you'll see replacing the, kind of the old doghouse-style ones at the transit stations. Shall I continue?
Actually, while, while you're paused, I'm just gonna let everyone know, uh, in case anyone is wondering. Uh, we are planning a working lunch from approximately eleven forty-five till twelve thirty, but there will be an opportunity then for anyone who needs a loo break to, uh, pop to the washroom while people are getting their lunch. And otherwise, we are just planning on powering on through until I see people falling asleep in the afternoon and then we'll consider a coffee break then.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so carrying on utilities. So, uh, Tyrone McCabe's here, he's our manager of utility services. Um, he has a team of five staff. They're also located over at Mission Flats. So, uh, big, big accomplishment here, which was actually put in place just before the start of, of last year, but it was in, uh, kind of the first, two thousand, tw- twenty-three was the first year of the full operation of it. We had a five-year, uh, long-term engineering consultant contract that's been really successful. Uh, prior to getting into this contract relationship, we were doing one-off, um, procurement processes to select an engineering firm to work with on each individual project. So not only was that labor intensive to go through that process, we also didn't have any sort of the long-term sort of understanding of our system. No consistency with the different engineers and consultants, and to be blunt, we've had some bad experiences. So th- this has been a, a real good shift moving forward and having that reliable, uh, expertise that we can tap into. So it really operates a bit like an extension of, of our own staff. And I know many of the municipalities and certain smaller municipalities have a similar type of arrangement, and they probably do it for the, the same reasons. But they can't justify their own in-house engineer, but working with the same firm on all different projects is, is beneficial. So related to that, uh, definitely one of our, our strengths that we continue to do is this whole pre-design and planning. We've been very successful in receiving grants, uh, around, uh, pre-design and planning for other projects. And what that really does is gets us with a, what's called a shelf-ready project. We have a cost estimate, uh, and, and a basic design of what needs to be done to improve these systems. And then when a grant opportunity comes up, we often don't have a lot of time to, you know, put together a proposal. Um, we wouldn't have the time to do an engineered pre-design. So having a shelf-ready to go, then it gives us those opportunities. Capital projects that we've accomplished this year, um, right near the final completion of our Black Pines groundwater conversion, which has been, uh, a, a long process, but it's gonna be a huge, uh, benefit to that community, uh, because we are really at the whim of the river levels and those river levels have been continuing to change. So we're, uh, essentially abandoning that intake and, and going onto groundwater for that system. Blue River, we're working through the final stages of getting the backup generator installed and connected, so there'll be a permanent solution there. We all, we do have a mobile backup generator that we can deploy from Camloops, but Blue River is one of our bigger systems. So having a permanent one in place will be, uh, definitely a benefit to that community, and this was through a donation, community benefit donation from Trans Mountain, from the camp. Uh, and also did a bunch of upgrades to our Paul Lake wastewater, uh, lift station, uh, and communication upgrades there as well. In general, um, and this is thanks to Tyrone and, uh, Mick Orton, our, our supervisor, um, really improved operational efficiencies, identifying where we're having, you know, frequent points of failure. So we can do, um, you know, work on those systems and prioritize where the work's done, uh, to, to reduce. And they have reduced the number of, kind of, emergency call-outs and overtime and, you know, middle-of-night issues. Challenges, uh, well, everyone, or, or the EA directors here who are on this, uh, utilities committee know well about our challenges. So I'll just kind of highlight that for the board, but we called it the, the funding gap, and it's been talked about for a number of years. But, uh, to put it bluntly and, and briefly, uh, our, none of our water systems are financially sustainable. We have, don't have the mechanism to get enough money to, uh, fund the operation and fund the capital that's needed to get them to the standards that, uh, that we're trying to achieve, uh, the I H A standards for drinking water. Staff capacity and resources, um, uh, we do have an awesome team, but we, you know, are a small team. So, uh, we're often struggling to catch up and react to issues. Uh, it would be nice to get to a spot where we're doing more preventative work instead of reactive work. Inflation's a challenge here as well, especially within the, the limited budget of each of these systems. And, uh, kind of as a general statement, I, I put capital investment versus benefit, and that's something that the utilities committee knows well and, and is a, is a struggle, because our, our water systems are, are very, very small in some cases, you know, with just a few dozen connections. And so when we're looking at what capital upgrades would be required to meet interior health, you know, four, three, two, one, zero drinking water regulations. Um, we're goo- we're going to be faced with the cha- the challenge of deciding like what's, what's a reasonable amount of money, even through grant funding, that needs to be spent on these small systems. So we're spending, for example, millions of dollars on a water treatment plant for twelve, twelve connections. Is that, you know, how do, how do we, how do we manage that? So that's gonna be a challenge moving forward. Threats, uh, definitely climate change is a threat here, um, drought. So this photo here on the right-hand side, this is looking towards Camloops from our Black Pines intake. So I just mentioned that project converting to groundwater. That tiny strip of water is, so that, this is kind of actually a back channel. So that water is what's coming in to feed our, where our water intake is. So you could just walk across that. If that dries up, then we have no water. So I can't stress enough that this project is just in the nick of time. Uh, cause as everyone here probably knows, that the, the, the river levels we've seen both last year and are expecting this winter in the North and South Thompson are, are extreme low. I also mentioned contamination as an impact. So one of the reasons that, and one of the other reasons or risks around these surface water is, uh, there are long railways and highways, uh, and there's always a risk of contamination, uh, of, of our groundwater. Or sorry, of our, our water sources. So, uh, where, like, in, in this case, we can go to groundwater, it, it reduces that risk of contamination. Uh, so non-T N R D community water systems, I think we are going to be hearing about this a lot more going forward. Um, and not that we haven't heard about in the past, but there are many water systems out there that we have no involvement in or no authority over. We only own and operate our own system. I H is, is responsible for the actual, um, uh, or is the regulator, regulator for, for all water systems. The ones that are owned and operated by a community group have no involvement with us. However, I think we're gonna be getting to a point where those community groups, or maybe challenged for a number of reasons, but for example, an intake that's dried up. Um, they'll be knocking on our door saying, huh, we have no water, how can you help? Um, it's not an easy answer, and we have a whole acquisition strategy that the utilities committee is familiar with. But, uh, it's definitely a threat that, that we're gonna be hearing about, and I, I know this board's gonna wanna help these people. Um, we're only gonna have, we're not gonna have a lot of tools available, um, and I think we have some, from, some challenges and we're gonna be hearing from, from residents. And not just community water systems, even, you know, the possibility with the, if this, if this drought continues of wells drying up and what's, what's gonna be the ask from communities, even though they're privately-owned assets and wells. Um, that doesn't mean people aren't gonna be knocking on our door asking for help when they don't have water out of their private wells. Changes to legislation, um, also a threat or challenge, uh, things like, um, new maximum acceptable concentrations in water quality that could lead to, again, requirements for different or higher-level treatments, which then snowballs into the, can we justify millions of dollar treatment for these very small water systems? Um, so to date, um, you know, the interior health has been somewhat reasonable on, on how to enforce these, these regulations. But, um, further changes could make it more, more difficult for us to continue to operate them within a reasonable budget. So I mentioned the, the four, three, two, one, zero, uh, drinking water objectives that interior health has, they're objectives, they're not mandated. Um, we are not meeting those objectives in any of our water systems currently. We have a plan, uh, some longer term than others to, to get there, um, with all the water systems. But if next year it turn around and mandate, you shall do it by such and such a date, what would that mean for us? How do we fund that? How is that even possible? And if we can't do it, then what do we do with our water systems? Opportunities, oh. Gas tax, we need more money. Um, so definitely continued usage of the Canada Community Buildings Fund, um, in the one-on-one meetings we've had with the EA directors. We've been speaking about this, um, and probably a plug from what Carl is gonna talk about, we're looking at, um, having a strategy and it's gonna be a requirement to actually allocate, um, gas tax to specific projects. Um, definitely there's a need in these utility systems. Uh, I, I would say that all the work that's been done to date in these systems has been at least partially funded, if not majority of it funded through gas tax. The, the, if I could be so blunt, the only reason we've been able to limp along our utility systems that we have is because of get the gas tax program, the, the Community Building Fund. Definitely looking for other grant opportunities as well that come down the pipe on, on an annual basis that we'll continue to apply for. And I mentioned, you know, I talked about that funding gap. This year was the second year that we had a meeting with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs about that at U B C M. So they've heard the exact same message twice now. Um, I wasn't at the meeting, but I heard the term pilot project was thrown out by the province's side, which is pretty exciting. That definitely wasn't, that term wasn't used the previous year. So maybe, um, there's some opportunity there. Now, this is, uh, I, I had this kind of under, listed under a thread as well when I talked about the other community water systems. But I, I also wanted to list it as an opportunity, um, around acquisition of other private water systems. With the big caveat that it would have to adhere to our acquisition strategy, which means that the T N R D would only take on water systems that are financially sustainable. But if, you know, there was systems that came online, we could have some more economies of scale within the department and maybe do a little bit more spreading those costs out across more systems. All right. Community emergency services, last of the departments, under, under my, my wings. Uh, so Kevin Skretnik, he's here behind me, he's the manager of this department, uh, six T N R D staff in that department. Um, this is the grab-bag department. Uh, anything that doesn't fit anywhere else ends up under Community Emergency Services. So, uh, I won't speak about, uh, everything that we do within this department, but just some highlights of, of what we've done this year. Um, Carla spoke to this, uh, to the third-floor renovation, and this is where this department resides. Uh, both the E O C room that's there, but also the, the, uh, the new staff, uh, meeting or staff office space that's there. So that's been, uh, a real benefit to have all the staff in one place working together. Uh, we've also been able, at the same time, over the last couple of years, and with the, the changes in structure over the last couple of years within the departments, have increased staff capacity within this department. Uh, so it's actually been a significant increase in staff capacity from, you know, two, three years ago, when there was just a couple of staff in this department, to now having, having six. Uh, not that those were all new positions, it was a bit of a reorganization, but there's just more capacity as a whole to work together moving forward. So I'm, I'm, I'm really excited about what this, how this kind of department has formed. So the emergency operation center downstairs has been, uh, an awesome, uh, capital project here in this building. Um, so speaking about the, the bricks and mortar of it, but also just the emergency operation center in general, uh, is a, is definitely a strength of this organization. Um, you know, the unfortunate reality, it's because we have a lot of experience dealing with emergencies. Um, but that said, uh, we have a lot of well-trained staff who are prepared and know what to do. Uh, we are in there pretty regularly. I think we're at, uh, about eighty days this year. We've had, we've been fully activated with staff in that room. Uh, we have new equipment, obviously the new, new room, but we also had an equipment grant of thirty thousand dollars, which helped, uh, just re- refresh the equipment. New TV monitors, new computers, that sort of thing. And I think in terms just of staff capacity trained in the E O C, we're at a better spot now than we've ever been. Uh, just looking back on this last year, even though it was a very hectic, uh, year in emergency operations, staff were still able to take vacations in the middle of the summer. We had people to backfill. Uh, and really, really happy about that opportunity. So even though it definitely is, people have to adjust and there's a lot of overtime. Um, it's a different scenario than it was a decade ago when everyone's vacation was canceled for three months and we just had to, you know, buckle down and get through it. We also have a new vehicle, which is, um, amazing. Uh, because I, I, I didn't really, I mean, we, we needed it just for getting around and doing stuff, delivering sandbags. But, uh, this year, the amount of comments that we got from residents, um, just appreciation that we were there um, because they saw our vehicle. Uh, we were out there before and, but we didn't have flashing lights and, uh, and look so official. So I think it just was ignored that we were around.
That just speaks to how superficial we are as human beings.
Not to mention, every staff member who drove it loved to play with the siren, maybe the siren also too. And, a- and, and joking aside, it hasn't, i- is an effective tool that, you know, when we're, we're, you know, putting up signs and evacuation order or supporting a, a checkpoint where the, the security guards are set up, um, people just have a different mentality when this, when this truck's parked there. So it's been, been really successful. Uh, so on the community services side, we had a number of capital projects we completed this year on the park side. A number of these you saw in the North Thompson tour. So, uh, Smith Pioneer Park Banshell, that was completed. That's a phased, uh, improvement going on in that park over the last few years, and the last phase is happening, uh, this coming year and, and included in the twenty twenty-four budget. But the Blue River Pedestrian Bridge, that, which all of you collectively were standing on, uh, this summer, we saw, uh, the park improvements in Little Fort, Beavonby Icerink. And, uh, just recently did some improvements to the swimming dock at Eleanor Lake and Blue River. Another change we made is our dangerous dog control, uh, officer. So we had previously contracted that out. Last year, we moved to doing that in-house, uh, with our, uh, we added an additional bylaw officer that shares the duties of the dangerous dog control response, as well as supporting the mandatory recyclables bylaw. It's been super successful. We have a, Darren is awesome, experienced bylaw officer, um, and, and his background is, he has a lot of experience in dangerous dog control. Uh, so we've been able to respond to those complaints, uh, quicker and, and, and in, in-house and more efficiently. Uh, the invasive plant program's also under this department. Uh, we hosted a, uh, a summit with the other invasive species organizations across the province this year, um, as well as put on a pesticide applicator course to increase capacity of, of invasive plant contractors in the region. Challenges here, um, definitely the region is big. Um, this is a challenge with all departments, but especially in the community emergency services. Forty-five thousand square kilometers is a lot of, of area to cover, not just in terms of emergency response. of area to cover, not just in terms of emergency response and planning, but even with providing community services. So we're we're stretched really thin to to kind of support all of those one off little services that we provide in those areas. Back to you, and and then on the emergency side, multiple and overlapping emergencies is unfortunately just a reality. This year, we were activated in, I think it was April thirtieth for a fire. Two days later, we were still in there and it turned into a flood response. Two weeks after that, we were still in there, but then we had a chemical spill that we were responding to. So it just, it's always comes in in waves, it seems, which is just a challenge for when we're in a EOC, it's a lot more straightforward when you're dealing with one emergency. Multiple emergencies makes it more challenging, especially when there are different types of emergencies. So related to that, we're challenged with other projects and services sometimes getting postponed during emergencies. This isn't just within the department, it could be across the whole organization. But definitely within this department, we have a lot of capacity of of our own own department staff that are essentially this entire department is is in the EOC during an active emergency. On the invasive plant side, we had some challenges this year and expecting to be ongoing challenges with actually contractors to do the work. So just a a quick reminder for this board that we coordinate invasive plant treatment on behalf of the Ministry of Transportation on highways. So we can only do enough as much work as they fund us for, but we're responsible for hiring and coordinating that work. And this year, partway through the season, one of the contractors essentially up and closed his business. And so we were scrambling to try to get that work done. Inflation's impacting this department as well, I won't speak to that any further. And just varied staff responsibility, there's a lot of hats that the staff in this department wear. There's a lot of kind of small one off services that we provide, so just always trying to balance that is is a challenge. What are the threats here? I'll only mention it, we're going to speak, Kevin, I'll actually speak to it in the board meeting tomorrow around the new Emergency and Disaster Program Management Act. The big question to me is who, how's this going to be done in the sense of who's going to pay for it? There's a lot of responsibility that's on local governments, so what does that look like? Climate change obviously is direct threat to emergency response, how we respond to it, how we prepare for it. Staff burnout, both EOC related or otherwise, really I could have put this as a threat and I know the other departments have mentioned as well that we're we're sensitive to. We have a great team, we want to make sure to keep them happily working here. And so I mentioned back to our, the fact that I was happy this year that we were able to have staff still take their scheduled vacations. I think that's going to be continued goal going forward, that you can't, you know, that if you plan a vacation in the summer, you should be able to to take it and we should be able to cover for you. The invasive plant control, again, with the the contract that we have with the Ministry of Transportation. It's kind of always a risk and a threat because this, what we're doing is really taking on a responsibility that's not ours. It was a decision of this board to pursue taking on that responsibility. So around not just the responsibility, but the liability of coordinating the work on the highways and really being at the receiving end of public complaints, because we are the ones out there doing the work. Opportunities, well, even though I mentioned it as a as a threat, it's also an opportunity around this new Disaster and Emergency Management Act. What it's going to look like, if there's opportunities for increasing capacity, increasing planning, possibly, likely grant funding that's coming on the heels with this new act. Invasive plant program, there's there's continuing to be more and more interest in us partnering with industry and other businesses, so there's opportunity to sort of expand that program with more funding opportunities. Regional park strategy, I'll hint at that, this came up to a committee of the whole back in June and there's a report coming to the board in December around moving forward. That's definitely a big component that would land within this department. And just a teaser, a reminder of what that would look like is really the idea of having a strategy of our our local community parks within electoral areas, but also have a regional plan of of developing parks infrastructure that's really more of the tourism, economic development point of view to bring people in. Service delivery partnerships across all the different aspects of what falls in community services that we want to, we see as as opportunities on the horizon. So with First Nations, with many municipalities, with other community groups and with industry and business.
Thanks, Jamie. I just wrote, just for information, lunch will be here right away. It's just being set up, we only have three, much shorter, there's not any other department as big as operations, so three remaining that we can probably get done in the next ten or fifteen minutes, if you'd like to just finish them off.
What you're saying nicely is that no one speaks as long as Mr. Viera does.
He did a good job.
I was going to say, I thought he'd never leave the stage. And I think it's still morning, so good morning, everyone. I'll take you through Development Services, which comprises of building inspection, planning and one bylaw officer. Starting with our strengths, overall Development Services is in really good shape. Last several years, we've seen higher than expected revenues, I would say probably for the past five years or so. This past year, we're down on revenue, but we predicted that as a slowdown following the COVID sort of boom that we've had. Application numbers in building and planning remain strong, again, down from the COVID highs. But when we look at the ten year average, we're still at or above the ten year average. Building permit fees, they were calculated based on construction value. So what we're seeing is even with fewer permits, the cost of construction is high, so the values are still coming in fairly strong, kind of offsetting the fewer permit numbers in some cases. Nevertheless, we look carefully at our surplus in recent years because we have had a surplus. And it's not being caused by over expensing. What we found is that it's really because of higher than expected revenues. So nevertheless, we carefully went through the the budget and made cuts in several areas to help reduce the need for additional taxation. Again, the recent years of surplus has meant strong operating reserves in Development Services. And Carla touched on this earlier, but these reserves help us in economic downturns and help offset the need for additional taxation. So now we have a draft five year budget that really looks to deploy these reserves, both next year and moving forward. And if we do run a surplus again, that can help to keep up with our reserves. Staffing levels have stabilized, I think in the last, let's call it about five years, we've we've had a number of shortages, especially in the building inspector area. We successfully implemented a building inspector and training program. So we now have three, part three building inspectors, which are the sort of highest level that you need for complex and multifamily buildings. And they are hard to come by in BC, so the fact that we have three of them speaks to the success of that. We also have a part two inspector and a couple of part one inspectors. Same goes in the planning department, planners are hard to find throughout BC, but we have a good, strong team currently in place. And ironically, we had some of our busiest years, so highest revenue at a time where we were short staffs. So we had basically more revenue than we expected and less expenses because we weren't filling all of the seats on the bus. Again, that has stabilized this past year and I'm hoping that that continues. And we, our strong team is focused on customer service and reduced application times. So we've made a lot of headway in the past, again, three, four, five years. Building permits, four to six weeks, even for the busiest summer months this year, we achieve that. And so that's very respectable if we compare it with other jurisdictions. So we're happy with where that's at, but always looking to improve where we can. And then just the client and customer inquiries that we get, one of the things I'm really proud about in our department is we pick up the phone, we get back to people. You can't say that for all local governments in BC. And that's something that you can't measure, so if you ask me how many applications did you have last year? I think that only tells part of the story, I think another part of it is how good we are in our customer service. Inquiries from people looking to move here, realtors, et cetera. And again, the COVID boom that occurred with some of our busiest times. Weakness and challenges, given how busy we were in recent years and having only a small team, we haven't undertaken as much long range planning work as we would have liked. Our focus has been on applications, so the longer range projects that we were working on are kind of off the side of our desk. We have a budget line item for project work and it's been underutilized in the past few years. We have a number of outdated official community plans, I can think of at least three of them that are between thirty and thirty five years old now. So I do think it's time to be recommending that we do start looking at some of these and at least taking on one project in in twenty twenty four. And so we've kept that project line in the budget to be able to move forward on something. If that's not the direction the board wants, then that's an area that we can potentially cut some more in the budget. But rather budget for it and use it rather than budget for it and not proceed. And in recent years, given how busy we've been, we haven't been able to keep up with outstanding building permits. And so you're seeing more and more section fifty seven reports coming to the board. And in one of the recent meetings, one of the directors asked, because I think it took five or six years by the time it was brought here, and yes, we just can't keep up and we're still having to deal with issues from multiple years ago. A permit is valid for three years, plus there's time for extension. So even the files that our inspectors are working on today could date back to three or four years ago. So we can't look at the permit numbers in isolation for this past year because we're still working on permits from three years ago. So we haven't felt the slowdown, even if on this, statistically, we've had fewer permits. We have a very large geographic area, most regional districts our size don't provide building inspection for the entire area. The size of our region obviously hasn't grown, but the cost to cover the service over that enormous area is going up. And then I also wanted to highlight legal costs related to enforcement, legal costs are going up. The board has authorized us to take some legal action in in some recent in camera meetings. And so that's been reflected in the budget for this year. And hopefully that can stabilize again over the kind of five year term. So you'll see a bump up for this next year and then kind of stabilizing for the remainder of the five year plan. Opportunities, again, with a strong team in place and potentially not as busy in the past few years, now might be a great opportunity to take on some long range planning projects or at least one. Especially if, again, file load remains manageable, I think we can do a lot of that in house, keep consulting costs down. I've already had a couple of area directors ask me about projects in their area. So I think we'll be bringing something forward for future committee of the whole where we can discuss which area would be a focus next. We continue to improve on processing times. More importantly, I think we can also spend more time on the applications that we have now that we're not as busy. So again, things fell through the cracks when we were very busy. And now we can keep up on enforcement and keep up on making sure those applications remain on track, don't fall through and we don't end up coming here seven years later asking for a notice on title. Capital planning, I wanted to mention that we've looked at our vehicle purchases, that's the main capital that we have in Development Services, moving that over to a capital plan and projecting out vehicle costs over time, I think is an improvement and an opportunity that we've done. So that we're staggering those costs and not purchasing multiple vehicles in one year and causing a large hit on taxation. So we've really tried to work hard to to stagger that and and work that out. So I think that was an opportunity and we've started to address that. I was told not to end on a negative, but here I am with threats. Inflation, you've heard it already today multiple times. Our costs are rising, our expenses are going up, but revenues are not keeping up. So a lot of our revenues are application fees. I use example in planning, our application fees are about the same as they were in the early two thousands. In some cases, we've actually dropped the the application fees. And so our fees are are the same, inflation, definitely not keeping up with inflation. And Development Services fees are never break even at any local government, it's always subsidized. But I think at some point, if these costs keep rising, we're going to have to come to the board and revisit the question of whether or not there there should be changes to our fees. Economic uncertainty, high interest rates, we're already seeing that. Higher interest rates, fewer, less construction. And each year, what we do in Development Services is we take out a crystal ball and we we stare into it and we and we try to predict both application numbers and potential construction value to come up with, with what our anticipated revenues will be. So if we aim too optimistically, then we could end up short in revenue. If we aim too low and we end up with a surplus, then there's questions about why we have a surplus. So we have budgeted conservatively and we've also considered the potential impact of fewer permits. Aside from our crystal ball, we also contact Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, Canadian Home Builders. So we do reach out to professionals that employ economists to try to get as close to the estimate as possible. If we enter into a recession or a hard recession, obviously our revenues would take a hit and we'd have to adjust. So I'm not saying we're predicting that, I'm just saying staff are cognizant of it and we factor that into our into our plans moving forward. If that really happened, then we would have to tap into our reserves even more. Again, Development Services, we made hay when the sun shined and so we do have strong reserves and they should help us if it does get into more difficult economic times. We've heard this theme already, but continuing shifting of regulation and requirements and responsibility onto local government. Staff can't keep up with the changes, especially the agricultural land reserve. Property owners are having to make more applications. So that means more staff time, more processing, we're doing more applications now than we did fifteen, twenty years ago. And not necessarily because there's more development, but because there's more provincial requirements necessitating these applications. And again, the fees, in the case of agricultural land reserve fees, those are set by the province, so we can't change those. They're nowhere near break even, they barely cost, they barely cover the cost of starting an application. Right parion requirements, same deal. There's no way, there's there's additional requirements that the province is putting on landowners and local government and we can't collect fees for that, yet it's time that staff are spending doing the work. Expectations regarding floodplain management, geo hazards, that's a big one, we keep getting data from the province and different groups. We need to implement that data, if we know these hazards, we have to be mapping them out, putting in requirements to keep people out of those hazard areas. These are all things that are kind of at the side of our desk, but we need to be doing them and staying on top of them. And there's no funding model, there's no money that's being provided by the province to help us keep up with that. Increasingly stringent building code, same deal. Even if the same amount of inspectors we have today that we had fifteen years ago are working on the same number of applications as they were fifteen years ago, these applications have doubled in size, the the requirements, the things that have to be looked at today are just taking way more staff time. So it's getting more complex and and there's no real recovery of the cost of doing that. Business licensing is another example, the province is working on legislation now to empower regional districts to implement that for the first time. These are all great tools, but how are we going to pay for that if that was something that the board even wanted to pursue? Despite these threats, I I think we're in a good place to take on these challenges, we have a great staff, a great team in Development Services. And even if we do enter into an economic downturn, I think we're well positioned, so. And we're always looking for areas to streamline and improve as well. I'll leave it at that, starting to get hungry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, Film Commissioner Hadwin, you're up next.
How intuitive Scott to know that I needed a microphone adjustment there. Okay. Thanks, everybody, I'm going to be very, very quick. I'm going backwards, let's go forwards. So speaking to the Film Commission's strengths, we've done a little bit of research and digging around and looking to see what other types of budgets are spent within investing in film industry and we are pretty much on par when we look at population, when we compare to size of the region and when we look to see the return on investment. So it is fairly comparable to other areas of the province, we are one of eight regional film commissions. Other strengths that we have is the investment of funds from the TNRD and the province tax dollars are well tracked. So we can see that there is a significant So we can see that there is a significant uh return on investment. So just last year, we had approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars expenses total for the film department. And an estimated eighteen million dollars in revenue in the TNRD in film industry. Um, so that's that's pretty significant. Uh, film commission projects also do um benefit other departments that we have within the TNRD. So those are some of our our key strengths. Uh, some of our weaknesses is um include, uh, we don't have much as far as established uh infrastructure. We would love to have one of those big boom in studios that would support the growth of crew development here. Um, staying here, working here, um, not to say we have nothing, but it would be nice to see some growth as far as infrastructure there. Uh, the film commission, we're pretty small. There's two point two of us and we're pretty dynamo, but uh it's still, it's bro- pretty teeny. Uh, so that kind of can lead to a lack of coverage as far as vacations, sick time or or any other circumstances that might come up. Uh, some of the threats. So I'm watching the SAG-AFTRA strike quite, quite. It's 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 very prominent in my life. Um, we are very close to a resolution, I hope. Um, it seems like it's almost by the hour right now, but um I've come to know that. There is no crystal ball, unfortunately, like planning had, so I wish that there was. Um, but that is impacting the large production, um, large-scale productions that we have coming into um the region. Uh, so are you guys sick of inflation yet? Uh, it is impacting us, obviously. Um, the more that we're having to pay for increased of costs when it comes to travel or. Labor or whatever the case may be, it is impacting our department. Um, so that does um impact our ability to to provide excellent services in our in our department. We've got some excellent opportunities on the horizon. I feel like um provincial funding is, I believe, quite likely to increase over the next five years. Um, I I don't have um anything written in stone, but I I have a very, very strong feeling that that is the case. That the province is becoming more and more aware of the economic impact that film industry has to the province and how it does need to grow within the entire province. Uh, it's just in my nature to keep an eye out on grants that are out there that we can leverage our funding and we've already. Uh, taken advantage of applying for a couple of those quite recently. Um, one of them has me incredibly amped. That's a, that's a pun. Yeah, I hope you got it. Uh, it's, we're applying for funds to uh purchase green battery generators that will be more eco-friendly. They are so. Um, well-used in Vancouver and I think that bringing those into our region will make us that much more lucrative of a place to be. Um, they've got other benefits besides just being um more eco-friendly. They pr- um produce less noise pollution as well. So a lot of great things could come from having those great green generators. And we're also also trying to um mitigate some of the inflation costs um by hiring. Local scout photographers throughout the region so that we're not sending them forth from from the center. We're hoping to have. Uh, representation, providing us with local knowledge and grabbing beautiful stunning imagery as well as the scout photography. Images that we'll be needing to present to possible film productions. And then we'll go on to library.
Chair Roden, just uh if I could mention, last but not least is Jenny Abramczyk. She's our acting uh chief librarian. I believe she's here. Um, for those that maybe haven't met her yet. So uh, this is Jenny.
Yes, I'm not Judy in disguise. Um, just filling in for her while she's she's on her leave, so. Library, as Scott says, last but not least, so let's move forward. I wanted to start with something that uh library folks don't often talk about, and that is library return on investment. Uh, there's a new study that just came out through the Canadian Urban Institute and they um highlighted something that. Kind of gets highlighted over and over again throughout the years, but that every one dollar invested in Canadians' urban libraries um. Results in six dollars generated into the community. So that's a return of over six hundred percent. So we often talk about, you know, qualitative um value of libraries, but I think it's important to to know that there is. Um, a quantitative uh value as well. Um, we've got some really great, dedicated, enthusiastic staff. We've got excellent facilities. I think if you were to tour libraries across the province or. Even across the country, you would find that our library facilities are pretty top-notch. And we do also have a facilities master plan to help guide us through um development and and updating that needs to happen throughout the years. Um, another really great thing is we did uh receive about one point two million dollars in one-time provincial funding. That we will be using towards um. Uh, RFID ident- so radio frequency identification for our collections, so that will help with our circulation as well as other innovative technologies such as. Book dispensers, hold lockers, things that can kind of move us forward in into the twenty-first century. Um, and we also have a really great partnership with the city of Kamloops. Um, with our uh community service officer that is at the North Kamloops Library. So that is in lieu of a regular security guard. We've got somebody there who can really support the staff. Uh, and the community with um some of the issues that we're we're seeing out there. I'm really grateful to have that partnership. If we look at weaknesses, uh, you've heard this again and again, but it's it's staffing. Um, you know, we are among the lowest librarian FDEs and staffing costs in the province. Um, I was doing the math this morning and, you know, I I think five of our eight. Uh, in-scope librarians have have left us within the last two years and we were only able to recruit. Two replacements with the qualifications that we that we wanted. So we're having to. Um, hire folks who don't necessarily have the qualifications that we're asking for. We've got a job posting out right now for maternity leave. So far, we don't have any qualified applicants for that either. So um staffing is really um a challenge for us, um particularly at the librarian and leadership level. Um, you know, I s- I saw a job posting that came out last week um for the Caribou system and we always think of the Caribou as sort of our poor cousin. But um, you know, there was a a branch head posting for the Quinnell Library, which is, you know, that community is not even a quarter the size of Kamloops and. You know, they're paying far more than than what we pay. So I think we're going to continue to see this um with recruiting our senior staff. Um, uh, another weakness or you could look at as an opportunity is there are lots of opportunities for engagement. Um, in our communities, but we don't necessarily always have the resources to do everything that we would like to do. Um, wage budget reduced. So this is a bit misleading. Um, so we are going into twenty twenty-four, we are going to have um a budget reduction for our wages. But really, and and Carla can can correct me if I'm not getting this right, but. It really, it's not so much wages because we haven't been spending that money. That money has been used um and rolled over to um support uh capital. So that's really where we would um would feel that with like larger projects that we might want to move forward with. Um, and then we also have um a collection budget decrease, so six percent less than our twenty twenty-three budget in order to even out uh taxation. Um, that's more like a nine percent um decrease in terms of actual buying power. So it's going to be tight on our collections budget for for the coming year. Threats, again, everybody says it and it's true. Increasing costs, materials and services. Um, we're looking at um a um. A a tentative ten percent increase in our delivery contract. So that's going to be another sort of um pinch for us. Um, of course, unprecedented emergencies. We all know about uh Litton. We all know about, you know, the flooding that's happening in Cache Creek and Merritt and. Um, obviously COVID and staff illnesses and and vacancies. So those are all um. All threats that are very real. Um, and then another threat I think is, again, uh, you know, outdated ideas on on the value of libraries. Uh, not only the social value, um, the literacy value, but but also the economic impact. Um, and I've already mentioned a few of these other things. I think. One that's interesting that I have never seen before is the political polarization that's happening within communities and how that is really. Um, spilling over into uh libraries and you're seeing protests and you're seeing um some sort of um downloading of of. Of folks' opinions and things onto these these public spaces. And so we're having to navigate that. Um, and then community issues, you know, that's always been um part of public library work is is dealing with marginalized folks. Um, that that is just only increasing and it and it really does um create challenges for. Um, ensuring that we do have a welcoming environment and that we are welcoming all sectors of the society. And of course marginalized folks as well as everyday folks, um, and wanting to make sure that our staff are safe as well. Uh, and another threat is the cost and availability of commercial real estate. Um, you know, those of you who are longstanding members of this board will have heard us kind of talking year over year about needing to expand in the southwest of. Uh, of Kamloops, having an additional location. So we've gone with this um tiny library that we're going to be opening later this month, which is very exciting. Um, but looking to the long term, what is that going to mean for us? Um, are we going to be able to purchase land or or not? And what what will that look like? And ending on opportunities. So um. As I just mentioned, the Aberdeen Tiny Library will be opening in a couple of weeks. We're very excited. We've had really good um engagement online, social media. People are really excited. We've just hired a a branch head for that um, that location for the temporary uh one-year term. So that's um Mike Brown, who many of you know from the mobile library. He'll be moving over to to Aberdeen, so we'll have a a vacancy there as well. Um, and then something I'm going to talk to you tomorrow about um I is uh Sun Sun Peaks, Sundays at Sun Peaks and the mobile library. So we're going to be doing a trial there as well. Um, other opportunities, as I mentioned, with vending, you know, book vending machines, hold lockers, um, surface extender at other locations. And and as well as our RFID. Um, we just completed a um survey of our patrons at the Kamloops libraries on hours and um we're. Going to be looking at that and seeing if there's anything that we can do to improve prove uh hours and access for folks here within the city. And we are updating our outreach model to improve access and be compliant with accessibility legislation, which many of you are already familiar with. Uh, the changes to legislation in that area. We've we've just hired um an intern who is looking at accessibility. In terms of our public spaces and our digital um content and and that type of thing. Some really exciting projects for twenty twenty-four is uh the Clearwater Library refresh. So. We have got uh tentative plans for that and will be moving forward in the new year. Um, we've got some good partnerships that have started with local First Nations. Um, and this is going to be an area, I think. That we will be focusing on going forward. Um, the Canadian Federation of Library Association has taken. Um, sort of relevant calls um from the Truth and Reconciliation Report. Um, and really distilled what um which which of those calls are really important for public libraries. And so we'll be using um some of those to to frame some of the decisions and and projects that we do uh going forward. Uh, we'll be looking at grant funding uh tentatively for twenty twenty-five to update our children's and teen spaces at the North Shore Library. And uh this coming year, looking at um a strategic plan or perhaps a strategic plan light because we have been without one for a few years in the library system. And then we've got a library card campaign to increase our membership, particularly within the city. Some of you folks in the regional areas um might know this or you may not, but in some of our communities, we've got like a hundred percent of residents who've got library cards, which is like. Totally unheard of. So really what we're wanting to do is to increase within um the city of Kamloops and the city of Merritt primarily. Uh, and then last, uh, twenty twenty-four is TNRL's fiftieth anniversary. So we're tentatively, the tagline is time to party like it's nineteen seventy-four. And we're going to do um some events and so uh some really cool things, I think, like focusing on, you know, what were the top books in nineteen seventy-four? And the movies and the fashions and what was going on in in the TNRD in nineteen seventy-four and and having some fun with that. So. We've got a little committee going for that. It should be really fun. And I think that's it.
Hands up everyone who can remember nineteen seventy-four and has no wish to go back to the fashions. Thank you. Uh, Director, Director Stamer?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, thanks very much. I remember distinctively when we, they opened the library in nineteen seventy-four in Barrier. I was in grade six and we were the first group to go up there and get our membership cards. So that was really cool. I can still remember that day. It was a day similar to this, I think it was in the spring and everybody was so excited that we had a brand-new library in Barrier. So thanks so much for that.
Oh, I believe lunch is available now out in the gallery. Director Ranta?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for questions to some of the presenters. We've had a number of presentations and whatnot and.
Yes, the plan is for everyone to go and get lunch and coffee. If they need it, come back in. The presenters will be here and then they'll be able to take your questions.
Thank you.
All right, so go and get some lunch and bring it back in and we will reconvene in a few minutes. Why didn't I have this when my son was younger? I don't know. Uh, if anyone has any non-financial questions for any of the staff who presented. Uh, please feel free to put your hand up now and Director Ranta, thank you. And then if you have financial questions, CFO Fox will be available afterwards to take a deeper dive into finance. Now, having said that, a lot of questions do have financial implications. So if it's primarily financial, if you could hold off, if it's not, then now's your chance to fire away. Director Ranta, I gather you have a question.
Yeah, my question is for uh Mr. Viera. Uh, during your presentation on solid waste and recycling, you mentioned the possibility of a second landfill in Cache Creek. And my understanding is the Bonaparte Band, including the chief, made a presentation to the Solid Waste Committee here at the TNRD. And uh, you know, it it may be that the village of Cache Creek feels that. Uh, a second landfill in Cache Creek is a threat to their existing operation. And uh, in light of the fact that the Bonaparte proposal is contained entirely within the boundaries of the village of Cache Creek. I'm wondering when Cache Creek will be engaged in uh. Hearing about this proposal. We haven't had a presentation from the Bonaparte at the village of Cache Creek. But uh, when is the village of Cache Creek's opportunity to be engaged in this proposal?
Uh, thank you, Director Ranta, through the chair. Uh, I'll I'll answer that question from the perspective of the TNRD. Obviously, I can't speak for the proponent and their engagement directly with the village. But from the TNRD perspective, the process that's been adopted by the TNRD board is around a plan amendment request. So a new landfill in the TNRD would need to be approved through the amending the current solid waste management plan and the board would need to be in support of that. Um, we're kind of at step one of that process that we laid out where the proponent has given us this information. And then that um information, once we compile this information, it's going to be going to the board either November or the December meeting of this year. To make a decision whether or not to even begin the public process of a plan amendment. Um, if the board decides to move forward with considering the plan amendment request, that would kick off a full comprehensive. Uh, uh, public consultation process, which would include uh creation of a plan amendment. I can't remember the term. We use Plan Amendment Review Committee. Which would include representation from that area and the village of Cache Creek would be part of that that committee. As well as generally speaking, the village of Cache Creek and all the residents would be de- definitely need to be engaged as part of the public consultation, which. The proponent would be required to lead, but would have to be approved, like their consultation plan would need to be approved by the board. This is all if the board even approves considering the amendment request and and starting that whole process, which we haven't got to yet.
If I, if I may, uh, Director Ranta, I was at the Solid Waste Management Committee meeting in March, I believe it was, when they made the presentation. And I did specifically ask if they would be presenting to stakeholders such as Cache Creek, uh, South Caribou Sportsman. Uh, Association was another group because their uh facilities are directly impacted. The answer that they gave to the meeting at the time was that the TNRD presentation was the first. The answer that they gave to the meeting at the time was that the TNRD presentation was the first of many that they would be reaching out to the other stakeholders. That's where they left it. And then shortly after that, their CAO was let go. So I have no idea if that altered the process somehow. Director Sal and Director Getz, I've got your hand up as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Director Grigné. So I've got Director Sal, Gets and Grigné at the moment.
Thank you, Chair. Through to Mr. Viera. So you were mentioning about competition from other private landfills and pardon my ignorance on the topic. I have not heard of, I didn't, wasn't aware that's other privately operated landfills, reducing fees collected as a threat. Our regional districts, actually maybe to Mr. Lewis as well, regional districts legislated to provide solid waste management. If not, it's kind of like similar to water systems if we're we're losing money and taxpayers are subsidizing it. Is there any potential to let the private sector take over?
Yeah, thanks for that. Through the chair. Regional districts are responsible for solid waste management. So if there's if no one else is providing the service, then it falls to the regional district to provide the service. The 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 question, I think where you're getting at was, well, if if private landfills are there, could that save money from the TNRD if they just let the private landfills run? Landfill as as an entity is a money-making proposition for the most part. The challenge we have in the TNRD is we have two landfills that if they were standalone, the amount of revenue we're receiving of those landfills covers the operating costs of the landfills. However, it's a regional service and we're funding the operation of 26 other transfer stations where the fees we receive are a tiny fraction of our operating costs there. And so that's why it's a regional service. So that's my way of saying that that they're explaining that the the private landfills, they're only doing it as as a money-making mechanism. Whereas our landfills are a need for disposing of our waste, but also as a and a revenue source that offsets costs that that the entire regional service benefits from.
Director Gets?
Thank you, Chair. I have two two quick questions. I think the first one is from Mr. Viera. As we merit, we're getting, you know, hopefully closer and closer to rebuilding our dykes about 14 kilometers to Q200 levels. I've had several people downstream in the TNRD call me with concerns about once we do our dykes and we have the water moving through much quicker, how it's going to affect them downstream. I'm just wondering, is TNRD looking at what happens when we start to improve our dikes and what may happen downstream for some users?
Thank you for that tough question, Director Gets. So through the chair, the short answer is no, we're not at this point. It's a definitely, yeah, no, and it's a fair consideration. The complicating factor is, and and from the public point of view, is, you know, there the expectation is that TNRD would do that. But we don't have any dykes where the difference is, you know, merit, that is your infrastructure, the city's infrastructure that they're improving. We don't have any infrastructure we own. So the way it works in reality is that private landowners are able to do things within their own property to do stream protection. We don't have a any infrastructure that we own or operate to protect it from flooding.
So just to help you out, we are actually pushing for a provincial dyke authority. So hopefully we get there. I'm not sure who would take this question. The future impact on building permits, I have several people that have approached me that are contractors that are extremely worried about the step code system adding cost to houses. They're actually talking about going from step code three, which we are now to step code five and bypassing four. Have we had any any look at what that might, I'm hearing that this could actually add about 70,000 to a home and whether it's a viable situation. So I'm not sure that's a question that can be answered, or have you heard any rumblings about that? So I'm just curious.
Good afternoon. Yeah, the step code three, as it's come out to to date, hasn't increased the cost of construction by a great margin. The energy advisors are coming in at a at a better price than was expected. So that seems to be the preferred method that builders are going is through an energy advisor to establish step code three, four, five. And we're seeing homes that are voluntarily going to step five. I haven't seen that kind of a increase in cost, $70,000 for a, let's say it's a typical home. Yep. Yep. But there was a quick response by that industry to come forward and provide their service of energy advisors. You recall, we kind of looked for a prescriptive path option for builders in the regional district. And to date, there have been very few that have followed that path, finding that the comparison between the increased cost of materials versus hiring an energy advisor separately was actually a better path forward was to just hire the energy advisor and allow them to build substantially alike what they did before. To our surprise.
Thank you, Director Grigné.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to give some feedback to what to staff on what I heard this morning and share with staff some of the conversations I've had with other directors. The the first thing that struck me when I got the package was what a marked improvement from, I'll call it the data dump. I know it wasn't intended to be a data dump, but last year's budget presentation, which was rushed and for all the reasons it it was, I guess, perhaps not as explanatory, there's been a marked improvement in the presentation. And it was obvious right from the beginning when I began the analysis and when I began to talk to other directors and when I began to talk to staff. So I wanted to say a big thank you for for making it easier for us to discuss this with you and great progress on that. And that goes to all the staff. The second thing is that I'd like to say congratulations on the SWOT analysis, the strengths, weakness, opportunities and threat. And particularly for pushing that back down through staff so that they could assess themselves their strengths, weakness, opportunities and threat. And I think it's a it's a very timely thing with the budget to revisit that and say, how are we making out with that? So a big congratulations to all of the departments in that. And then I also want to say I particularly appreciate it and I can't wait to share with my constituents, the EA presentation. Colton, I don't know if you're here. Yeah, you're in the back corner. And your team have made it. I won't say it's fun to read, but I found it fun. And I found it very useful. I think when I push that out through social media, not only is it going to inform our constituents where their money is going, what our responsibilities are doing, but it's going to precipitate questions back. And so I think it's a great step in the in the right direction of engaging constituency. And these things that that I talk about today were the things that I asked about a year ago. And 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 I'm delighted that that you seem to be responding to that. So thank you very much for all of that.
Thank you, Director Grigné. Director Laird?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions. One of them is on the EOC expenses. Does the provincial government reimburse any of our costs for operating the EOC? And how how much, what possible return do we get?
I can start, Jamie, please jump in, but through the chair to Director Laird. Yes, all of our time in there is covered after working hours. So if we're in there for a 14-hour day, 8:30 to 4:30 is covered by the TNRD. And anything before or after 8:30 or 4:30 is is eligible for reimbursement.
And that's for a five-day week. So if you work a weekend, it's all paid for by the
That's just five-day a week. If it's weekend, it would be 100% covered by the task number or the provincial government.
Okay, I've got one other question. On OCPs, we had a I've had a discussion with Alex about OCPs. And the provincial government now has, I'm not sure whether it's been legislated, but each area has to have an updated OCP. Like there's a time limit where we have to have it done. So my area hasn't been done for about 10 years. And I was wondering how we're going to fund it and the are we going to hire contractors? Are we going to try to do it in-house? And where is the funding coming from?
Through the chair. So some of that legislation change, I think, will also impact municipalities mainly. I'm not sure that it's going to impact all electoral areas. Many regional districts and throughout rural areas, we don't have OCPs that cover all electoral areas. So but on the ones we do have, and we do want to get on some of them, we do have a project line funding. So we have, we we budget for it annually. I think we have about 75,000 that we budget for. And I would see us doing the majority of that in-house and then have consultants assist us. If we went straight to consultants, we're looking at over 100,000 per OCP. So I want to try to keep it in-house as much as possible, reduce those costs and also give our staff some more exciting projects to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sarai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question for Alex is while you mentioned, we have few key people in in key positions. What are we doing to succession in that department? If it's if it's happening and I and I know the culture here very well, so it probably is. But those key people, are we allowed or are you allowed to make it a better work-life balance for them to stay longer and and enjoy their job? I'm I'm worried that if there's only a couple of people in that department and they decide that it's time to move on, we don't have a replacement and a succession plan. So I'm just wondering where we are on that.
Well, I thank them and I hug them regularly. One of the things about our department is we have a planner with over 30 years. We have two planners with 15, 20 years experience. So we have people that have been here a long time. So I think that speaks to sort of the culture and wanting to be here. Succession planning, yes, we're always looking at that. Obviously, there's been some changes. We just hired a new planning manager to take over my former position after our GM retired. So we're always looking at that. And I think, yeah, just building a culture where people are enjoy working here. And I think part of that speaks to the last question, which is giving them more to do other than application processing. So if we can give these other projects that 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 maybe they haven't had the opportunity to work on, I think that helps retain staff as well.
I just have one more question and it was for the Assistant Library Librarian. So you talked about how we're going to attempt to get everybody a library card. Some some of the districts have it already, but City of Kamloops. I think that's a great initiative. What's the next step to get it into the actual library, into the building?
Scott says a rope. Yeah, I mean, that's a really good question. I I think it's telling our story. You know, what are the library? You might have seen it in the in the atrium downstairs. There's a a poster and it says library card perks. You know, you can get a guitar from the library. You can get community passes, like really sharing our story. Give, celebrating what we do. We've put a lot more resources into our marketing and communications in the last few years, really increasing that budget, moving it from from other areas. So hopefully that will help. You're also going to see residents in the Dufferin, Sahali, Aberdeen area who are going to be getting a mail out as well, explaining some of these things, explaining our trial that we're going to have at Aberdeen Library. So those are just some of the things, but I'd certainly you know, be open to discussing if you've got ideas or or other folks have ideas as well.
Chair Roden, if I could just add to that as well. And this is was new to me, but sometimes when our library opens here, there's a lineup. And it's interesting to see, like, sometimes there's 10 people waiting in line to get into our library here as we are kind of moving around the building. And it's something that I wouldn't have expected until I've experienced it. So just as a a point.
And I think that's, Scott, that also ties into our hours of service survey that we've just undergone. So yeah, but it is, I mean, it is good and it's not good to see folks waiting outside, right? They want to come in.
I just think there's, sorry, anything the City of Kamloops can do with our communications team. I I'd be, we'd be happy to take that message forward to them. So anything we can do and and even, you know, the Kamloops Blazers or anybody else that can come on board to help give a shine a light on our library to get people in, I think it'd be a good thing. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'll reach out.
Imagine if Fraser Minton showed up at one of the branches and to meet the kids. Holy cow. Director Hamer Jackson?
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there's any additional opportunity for any grant funding. You know, because there's a lot of federal and provincial grants. I kind of by fluke went on the UBCM agriculture tour and learned right there that there was some additional grants that some of our farmers could get. And so I'm just, and and there's, there was ones that they could apply for themselves also. So I'm just wondering in in a lot of different areas if 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 there's any way or that we could focus more on that. If, you know, ones that pop in and pop out, I'm just you know, just maybe have a look at it. That's it's just a kind of a question.
Yeah, thank you. I can take that through Chair Roden to you. I think we have a really robust grant coordinator that's always looking for opportunities and we're on top of everything we possibly can. We we do our best to tackle that, but sometimes it just one person can't manage it all, but we'll certainly make sure that we dig a little deeper into some of those ideas that you that you brought up.
Yeah, because like, like I said, I kind of ran over by fluke and so, you know, came in and out and then and then and then again, like I said, there was ones that the that the private sector could apply for that they might be looking at us for. And so I, you know, they just come in and out and, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, we were very well connected with the province and the federal government with as far as grants go. And I know Kim is on, Chris McMillan is on that regularly.
Director Smith?
Thank you, Chair. For Alex, bylaw enforcement, are we've got any plans for adding staff in that respect? I mean, all we hear about is 45,000 kilometers in one person and how can we get to all of these all these areas? And I I think there's, there's a feeling certainly in my area that it's great to have all the bylaws that you want, but if you're not enforcing them, what good are they? So we seem to be falling a little bit behind on that on that stretch. So I just wondered.
At this time, there's no, no proposal to change the one bylaw officer position that we have, at least in the Planning and Development Services side. You know, Jamie's crew has their own bylaw officer who deals with some of the some of their work. So it's something we can certainly look at, but at this time, it hasn't been staff. We haven't been budgeting for that. We have that one position. There might be a retirement there at some point. And maybe that's something we can look at. Bylaw enforcement's a tough one. I I hear that there's a desire to do more and I also hear that people want to be left alone. And so I'm trying to find that balance. And if that's direction of the board, we can certainly look at getting more, but it wasn't something that staff was pushing for.
And Director Sal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Echoing Director Sarai earlier about concerns about retention. Of all the departments earlier, one of the departments that I felt a little bit concerned about was the library's staff. And what was mentioned about the the budget for, you know, remuner salaries. And, you know, one particular example, Green Quinell, you know, paying, offering higher pay for surfacing an area population that is smaller than Kamloops. I wonder if there's going to be few, so the budget is 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 drafted. And then there will be more op, another opportunity for the board to to ask staff to maybe consider that once more and in particular. Yeah, thank you.
Through Chair Roden, Director Sal, certainly there'll be a ton of opportunity for the board to provide input and questions and ideas. So we'll take that on. I know that we are looking at doing comparisons and comparables with other regional districts and other municipalities, just to make sure that we our staff and our our managing team are compensated fairly. And that information, of course, will come back to the board as well.
Director Gets?
Thank you. I put Mr. Veer on on caught him by surprise, so I'll try it again. Just a quick question, Jamie, with our landfill in Merritt. I know that we were looking at at some point, you know, talking about moving it. We're not moving it, but it was starting to fill up. And with the debris that has come from the flood in 2021, close to 200,000 tons, do we still have some room there? Because I know that there's going to be some more homes being dropped and stuff. And I'm just wondering where are we on that? Are we filled up? Are we are we okay for a while? Or I mean, I don't expect you to give me any kind of inside information, but I'm just, it the conversation does come up every once in a while. Curious.
Thanks. Through the chair, we're we're good for a while. We, you may recall discussions earlier where we were filling up our second phase and we're moving to a third phase. So that was that that was the improvement that that needed to be done. I don't know lifespan. I don't know lifespan, do we have an updated lifespan off the top of your head, Adriana, looking your way? Twenty-ninety-four, there you go, that's our current lifespan. You're absolutely right, though, there was a lot of, lot of additional material that came in the last couple of years there through all the disaster debris. So you can sleep easy now, yeah, yeah.
Director Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of observations and thoughts for directors to take into consideration as we listen this afternoon. It's great to see that we have some tremendous staff. I marvel at the medium age of mid-forties. You know, it's something that I think are the City of Kamloops could aspire to, to have as well. But what I've heard over and over again is from staff is systems updates, equipment updates, systems for recording structure updates, outdated HRIS system, outdated nine-eleven system. So capital investment is going to be critical for all these good people to do the jobs that they're employed to do. And if we can get them the right equipment, they might be able to do it even quicker, might be even to save us a little bit more money. So just an observation, something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Thank you for the comment, we appreciate that. That's our mindset as well.
Thank you, Director Raden.
I noticed the library in Sun Peaks, it's the first time I heard about it, but for Sundays. Has there been any consultation with the community?
As Jenny's coming up here, I know we've had that discussion with your CAO as far as the, because this is just the mobile library right now, but I'll let Jenny maybe speak to the consultation portion.
Yeah, so we have spoken with Deanna Campbell about this, and I know we've had folks on council asking Judy about this as well, wanting to have more service. And I'll speak to it more, you know, in a more fulsome manner tomorrow, when I really delve into, to why we're doing this and what we're doing. And then, and it's a mobile library stop, it's not like a bricks and mortar location, and it is just a, a trial.
Just as follow-up, I mean, I would have thought it fundamental to consult with the community. I mean, nobody's asked for this, nobody's being consulted other than Deanna, I understand. Where's the community involvement?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's, there hasn't been formal consultation, but certainly that's the feedback we get from mobile library patrons is, we want more.
And, and just if I could add as well, it's, it's certainly just a trial right now. We thought that it would make sense, and I know that Mrs. Bramzik will be bringing more, as she mentioned, a more fulsome understanding of why we're doing it tomorrow during her, her report at the board. So hopefully we can have that discussion tomorrow and follow up on some of those details.
It may make sense, but without talking to the community, or I haven't seen a report that says anybody's being consulted or surveyed or whatever. I mean, I have to say, I mean, it's, it seems like to me it's an impulsive type decision, no community involvement.
We can certainly take that back and provide more information tomorrow and follow up further.
Did anyone else have any general questions for staff before we start getting into the numbers? CAO Hildebrand, you have a question for staff?
I, I kind of do. I got a question as a follow-up to the Board of Directors. I made a commitment back at Blue River at our out-of-town board meeting that we would follow up and talk to all the CAOs. And we had a very successful meeting last week with, actually ninety percent of the CAOs. I know Litten wasn't able to be there for personal reasons, but I am following up with, with Diane. It was a very successful discussion about shared services, and that was the commitment and the promise that I made to the board. We, we talked for, we had about five or six hours together, and we had some great discussion, great dialogue, and a lot of follow-up. And I can tell you that the majority of your municipalities are looking for joint services with the TNRD in some way or some way going forward. So things like GIS, IT, safety, HR, building and planning, just to name a few. So we had a lot of really in-depth discussions on how that might look and how we can make that even more efficient for the entire region. So more discussions to come. We are gonna start with the GIS part, because that was the biggest request from the CAOs. And we're gonna work through that here in the next few, we got a meeting on Friday already, and we're gonna start working through that as a template or a pilot. And then hopefully expand that out to other services that, that makes sense. So just as a quick update, as we talk about efficiency and how we work together.
And just a quick follow-up, the CAO in Ashcroft was so excited about how the meeting had gone. She phoned me on the way home from Kamloops last week to say what a great meeting it had been, how glad she was it had gone ahead, how fantastic it was to get together with her counterparts in other municipalities and here at the TNRD. And I know that she will be very happy with the infographic, if you will, that was brought up, because it's not just handy for electoral areas. It's handy for municipalities, because in municipalities, as in AAs, we get, what does the TNRD do for me? Why am I paying this money to the TNRD? And so that was, I think, something that came up at the CAO meeting last week. And I think all the CAOs and CFOs in the TNRD and all the municipalities will be very happy to see that handy breakdown of when we write that really big check to the TNRD in the summer. Where's it all going and what's it getting us? Director Getz had his hand up again.
Yeah, just a real brief, I would like to congratulate Mayor O'Connor, Director O'Connor, and her council and everybody in Litten to actually hand out their first building permit in three years last week. I think it's a major milestone to have that happen, so good work on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other general questions for staff? All right, so I guess CFO Fox, you're back up at the plate.
We are going to invite Colton from Communications to come up. Just when we're moving forward on budget and we have met previously, starting in the summer, trying to be really proactive on the documentation and what we could foresee and, and all that work. We talked about, because the first year of the board, we had done public engagement recently that had bring, or brought some information that Colton's gonna bring forward, remind you where it is and, and kind of what that looked like for you guys going into, obviously, this budget planning and deliberation.
While we have your attention spans after lunch, I'll try and keep this brief for all of Carla's important stuff. I'm thinking five minutes, maybe six, you can time if you want. Just wanted to run through why we're sharing this again. We put out a public feedback survey for thirty days between February one and March two of this year. It's not something that I think we've done a lot of previously and that I have seen really much of in regional districts is, is vast, general surveying. It's a complicated thing to, to try and do. But the purpose was to try and hear, or was to hear residents' feedback on services and taxation and to get a sense of their priorities. We'd stated that feedback in this survey may be considered by the board in current and future planning, including the development of the strategic plan. Of course, this came before the board created its newest strategic plan. So the feedback could also be relevant for future budget planning, such as this year. On March eight, I sent the summary of survey responses to all board, board members, and the PDF document is live on our website, on the surveys webpage. And it's stayed there since that time. March eight, I also sent all of the comments to each rural and municipal director filtered by residents who specified which electoral area and member municipality they lived in. At the March ten strategic planning session, which was specific for electoral area directors, I had a bit of a lengthy slideshow on each community within each electoral area and shared a summary of key points and comments that were provided. Residents responded to the survey from at least fifty-one rural communities within the TNRD electoral areas. The survey was confidential, we didn't ask for identifying information from respondents. It's truly up to you as board members how you receive results and comments, just like comments from any other correspondence in your day-to-day and from public engagement that you do already in your communities. So as staff, we take direction from you, the, the board. So when we facilitate a survey like this, it's for the board as well. It's meant to support public participation and possibly complement what you're already doing. In sharing results with the board, I know some of you said you'd already heard some of the key concerns from your constituents. I'm sure most, if not all of you, have heard key concerns that you read in the survey from your constituency. Some of the concerns would be within the TNRD's jurisdiction, some would not be. It all affects people's day-to-day lives. I think the most common response across all rural communities was fix our roads or maintain our roads better in the winter. So that's, that's an uphill battle, always trying to remind people that the board can advocate for these improvements. But in rural areas, it's a province of B.C. function in every regional district. Rural residents don't actually pay the TNRD for any tax dollars for roads. It's all for, for the province between various ministries. Another comment I heard was that it seems like there's a lack of understanding of who does what and what services that the TNRD provides compared to other governments. So we've recognized a gap here, that I think that's just a general societal gap in a way. I think in-house, we've, we've worked to improve this. I'd given a short update to the Finance Committee two months ago on some of the goals that we have for displaying our tax and service information. I think we're making progress in helping people understand our services and our budget. Regional district budgets are complex, but I think we're, I think we're a leader among regional districts in, in some of the work that we've, we've done and started to do and, and to increase public understanding of where tax dollars go. We can always do more, so we'll keep trying to set priorities and work hard to align with your strategic plan. Just wanted to flash by some of the themes from the survey and in some of the multiple choice answers. One of the questions had to describe the level of taxes that you pay for TNRD services. Fifty-seven percent of respondents said that taxes are high compared to the services I receive. Twenty-seven percent said taxes are in line or actually low compared to what they get. Are you satisfied with the level of services you receive from the TNRD? Forty-two percent said no. I would note that's quite a bit lower than the percentages of respondents who did say taxes are too high. Would you like to see new services or an increase in existing services, which would likely come with an increase in property taxes? Almost two-thirds said yes to that, sixty-two percent. Would you like to see services reduced or eliminated? So in line with the previous question, almost the exact same percentage said no to reducing services, fifty-nine percent. I know it's been talked about at length by our departments about services and costs with the current inflationary pressures. Of course, even maintaining the level of service costing at times significantly more as, as what's been in the proposed budget. When we were building this survey, planning staff had recently completed the most recent monitoring report of the regional growth strategy. We keep all of those monitoring reports available on our website. So we thought we could include indicators from that report in the survey question to get a sense of priorities of respondents. So many of these indicators aren't TNRD jurisdiction, but they are things that matter to constituents and affect people's day-to-day lives. So number one, by a long shot, when we did this early this year was health and healthcare facility access. Health is generally straightforward, but there could be a, a few different categories that go into that. Number two, environmental protection and sustainability. Number three, affordable housing. And you can see the mix of down the list as you go through the nine indicators that are in that survey question. So mine's brief, those are some of the keynotes and considerations from our feedback survey in a general sense. We have the survey results, the general summary in full, available online. I had sent the comments to each of you. There's lots to consider during budget planning based on what you've heard from our department heads, what you hear in, in your communities and from your constituents and, and really your, your group decision-making. But this is just intended to be a tool that, that could complement budget planning and the work that you're already doing. That was it.
Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair. Just wondering what your, your plan is for us to roll out some of the recent stuff that you've sent. I want to coordinate that with whatever the exercise is, but I'd like to get it out there sooner than later, particularly the public participation part in our budget process.
Through to the Chair, to Director Grenier. So our plan was to, we've created all this material and we just finished with this actually a few days ago. And so we've let staff know, municipalities know, and, and you as the board know. So once we received feedback and presented it to you on this committee the whole day, the plan is to get that going. So our plan is to put out a news release, the latest would be Tuesday, telling people, here's all this information. We've done a lot of work right now behind the scenes, and now it's just pushing it forward about, and, and kind of blasting that out there about, here's what, what we've created. Here's, here's information about TNRD services, taxation, look at it, assess it for yourself. Do you have any comments, questions? We also, so there's a public feedback tool that we have as well, online, but also encouraging people to contact the TNRD directly. We've made everything printable to do these things in a streamlined and cost-effective way. Digital's always, there's the easiest, but you always have to consider, of course, folks who aren't on the internet, which is a great deal in the rural areas. So we've tried to make these materials viewable for, for people. Also, the regional newsletter that's, that's going out, I, I checked in this morning and haven't heard back on the exact timing. We'd sent that to the print shops about, almost two weeks ago, and we included on the front page a snippet in there about getting involved and learning about the budget process and directing people to the tools that we've now created, online or to contact the TNRD if they want that more information. So the regional newsletter should be in, in people's mailboxes in the rural areas, potentially as soon as this week. I'd imagine middle of next week at the latest, but that should be in the mail soon. So bit of a long-winded answer, but we're gonna be having all that come out very soon.
Just a quick supplemental, and are we going to have a public hearing perhaps based here at some point about the budget? So we can say we've had people in the audience that want to put comments through, could do that?
I don't know if CFO Fox would have anything to add on that, but we haven't, we haven't worked that into the plans at this point. But we've, we've wanted to make sure that resources can be made available to people as much as possible, even so much as this meeting, telling people online that it's happening today and telling people that when it's done, we'll be putting the timestamp recording on our YouTube page so that people could easily sift through it and find something that may be relevant or a section of this committee meeting that might be relevant to them.
Director Morris.
Thank you, Chair Roden. Just a quick question in terms of survey responses, had a methodology geek here. The, the overall percentage of returns or surveys in the work that you've done. And my first question would be, is the percentage of our overall constituents, what percentage responses do we get? And then the second question is, as an area PREP, I would like to also hopefully be able to look at some sort of dissection of information that tells me area by area what response levels, and I'm not sure if your methodology allows for that.
Certainly through the Chair to Director Morris, twelve-hundred-and-twenty-eight responses, and it was seventy-six percent was the actual completed. So everyone started the survey and not everyone got through to the, the last question. So I think that would be about nine-hundred-and-thirty responses. And in that presentation that came to the committee, we did have the responses that were specific, where people said in each electoral area, broken up by which electoral area they said they were from. I can reshare that as well, and had, we had the comments by community. There was a lot, I, I posted the second last day before it ended, reminders on Facebook pages, I were reminding people to take the survey and hundreds of people took it that day. But I think you have a really engaged Facebook page in Pinentan, Paul Lake, because their responses there were more than by far any other communities. So anyway.
Director Sarai.
Thank you, this is more of a question to, for staff, is that okay at this time? And it's not basically on the survey. I'm gonna, Alex, again, I, I'm giving you a lot of support here, so bear with me. When you talked about the fee rates since two thousand and one, we haven't increased them in development or development permits and that. Is that similar to other RDOs? And, and what is the update? Is it because activity didn't dictate it? Because I, I'm wearing my director hat right now, and we get a lot of compliments for TNRD process from builders. And they compare your process to our city process, and they say it's a night and day difference, and we want to try to achieve what you're doing here. But we're wondering why. But we're wondering why the rate hasn't been adjusted in two thousand.
Through the chair, partly everybody's looking at each other's fees. And so even when I look at other regional districts, nobody's made the move to really increase it. Because as soon as they do, they don't want to be seen as the regional district or the local government that has doubled the rezoning fees of anybody else. That's probably one of the reasons I've, I've seen over the years where there's just this hesitation to, to try to move up. Nobody wants to be seen as hampering development. And so even if we were to do it, I would recommend that we just incrementally raise it so that it isn't a big hit. Because we, we don't want to be punitive. We're not trying to keep people from developing. It would be more, I'll use the rezoning as an example. While we still had a local newspaper, the ad costs for the public hearing are well over the fifteen hundred dollars that we collect for the actual application. So we do the applications. It's subsidized basically. Development Services, a large piece of it is, is subsidized. So uh the only regional district I'm aware of recently, I think was Fraser Valley, that started to tackle the question of what should fees look like? And, and, and how much staff time actually goes in? It'll never be cost recovery, otherwise we'd have a, you know, multi-thousand-dollar application fee. And I don't think we want to go there. Um, but certainly I think it's a good discussion to have at some point and maybe just an incremental increase. Yeah.
Supplemental. So that, that's where I was trying to get at and Director Hall was, you know, uh, made us aware again that we're falling so behind, far behind on the I T side and, and getting processes done quicker i- in my opinion, and I think the other directors would share this. In incremental increase or even a big jump in one piece, not only can your department justify and the directors can justify it that nothing's been done since two thousand, but we also need to get with the times that this incremental or this one lump sum would be a, a, a process to help you, we, our job to, to do our job even better. And if not in this department and overall the uh TNRD, so that helps the whole process from, from start to finish. So I, I think, uh, I don't know the other upside or when this comes forward, but I think you'd have the support of trying to find some extra funds, especially in our region where it's, it's not the Kelowna, but it's sure an attractive place to build homes and, and recreation properties. Uh, I don't think someone would say no if their increases went up and you could tell them, hey, look, we haven't adjusted in two thousand.
Thank you. I have one last uh comment, I believe, from Director Sal and then if, if I was reading that timeline, we are way behind. So uh Director Sal, one more uh question and then we're gonna move on to the budget. No? Okay. All right, CFO Fox, take it away.
Thank you, Chair. Through to the board. So we've got the most engaging part of the whole meeting. I hope you guys had a good lunch and maybe went after some snacks. The sugar might help. I know I, I hit some sugar. You might be able to tell. Sorry. So this draft, this budget was a work in progress for you, for us. Uh, the, I, my motto here is really focusing on the systems that we're talking about and working smarter, not harder. Because we're doing all the things we need to do. We just want to do them more efficiently and the systems are certainly going to help uh with, with being able to do that across the board, reporting, uh communications. And uh I will say in my experience with communications, uh Colton does a, an amazing, a stellar job. Thank you, Colton. Good exit time. And uh I, of working with me, aligning with me to be able to understand and communicate the budget. You have to be able to understand and regional district is so complicated. It's complex. Um, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not striving for good. I am striving for excellence. So uh honestly, when I'm, I'm so passionate about the budget work and they refer to me as the finance budget nerd or Excel nerd, I'm okay. I embrace it. Uh, I really enjoyed that part of the job. Uh, being able to connect with the E A directors, uh expand my knowledge and learn about the regional district and the complexity in budgeting. I know the expectations from each of the directors is high. And I, I think understanding how to bring you the information in an appealing appetizing way. And I've heard lots of feedback on how to do that and lots of very contradictory feedback. So it becomes almost like I need a strategic uh designation on how to present financials to a regional district. Which brings me to the communication that Colton just talked about. It's, it's a double-edged sword. You asked me about holding a public open house or meeting on budget. You tell me I already have to have ten separate meetings with just E A directors to make sure that we're listening to your concerns and then trying to attract a region the size of ours all into one room to share common uh interests. It's a challenge. It isn't a challenge when I'm, when I'm striving for excellence this year, coming out of the year that we just had and I had. I didn't want to overachieve. So I didn't want to commit to something that I didn't know we would be good at or if we could deliver for you what we wanted. But what I can say, Fire Smart has brought the opportunity for us to go out and engage your communities. The operations team has went out at least six times this year and we get more bang for our buck by going with you to your community and talking to them face to face. Uh, I know I did some training on strategic budgeting and communications. And the number one feedback was if you mentioned budget, we're not coming. But we want to talk to you about all the things that you do. The other thing I heard uh coming into today, why do we need to be in this room again together to go through this? This is the only time our departments have an ability to highlight their strengths or weaknesses and opportunities for you. And it's been a year and your beginning year, it was like my beginning year drinking through a fire hose. You guys took in all this information. You're learning about the regional district, except of course there's people that have been here for a lot longer. Um, I want to be able to make sure that you understand what we're working on, what's going on. I actually want you to be able to support us and want you to be able to brag. When we talk about the shared services, some of the C A O has said, how do we go back and, and we convince people that you add value, that what, what we're paying for, we're, we're getting. And I said, ah, Jamie and I meet with every E A and we'll meet with every mayor and we'll meet with every C A O to help you understand. So please take us up on that opportunity because what we want to do and what you've seen in what we're trying to provide in communications is information. And it's trying to give it to you in a number of different ways, so you can understand it. And there are some of you that maybe want to learn how to do the budget. That's what, what I'm here for. I'm here to convince you, I, the team and I know how to do the budget. And you want the services, we're trying to bring you what it costs to, to bring that desired service. That desired quality of life that your constituents want. There's a lot. We're listening to all of you. We're listening to your constituents. Um, and we're listening to each other. Uh, that's what we've tried to build into this budget for you. This is a no joke budget though. I held off last year. I was a little worried because I didn't really understand everything. We have made cuts across the board, cuts that make me a little nervous. Also, we go into municipalities and we do budgeting and we bring you a budget that might still need to be cut. I did not do that. I need to tell you right off the bat, we brought you a budget we cut. We heard, we listened throughout the year. We listened to you talk about surpluses and the need for reduction of surpluses. We listened to you say reserves, some of the reserve balances are really high. Why are we doing that? Why aren't we giving our constituents a break? So we tried to address that where we could. If we brought this budget back to you without actually using your reserve funds, it would be, uh, I started over twenty percent. The only way we were able to do what we did was make the cuts that we needed to do. Uh, bringing you this draft budget and giving you the opportunity to impact the budget's really important because I don't forget that you need to go through the process. We have to give you the opportunity to go through the process. So previously, the budget came to you in December. So I did hear rumblings, oh, why are we doing this? Why are we meeting now? Why are we all coming together? Uh, I'm giving you the budget a lot earlier to digest and understand and impact if that's what you want to do. Because I'm trying in, in our strive to do excellent work, we're trying to help you feel like it's excellent work. So hopefully that's what you see and feel in this. I think that there's opportunities here for you to, to really understand. Uh, I'm not going to continue to repeat the seven times you've heard about inflation. Um, you've heard that, uh, what I will try to do, because we did share information with E A directors, um, make sure I'm sharing that same in, information with municipal directors. In the documents we gave you, as far as the attachments, I tried to reach out to you by email to make sure that you didn't get lost in the material. I, it, I think it's packaged well. I think it's branded well, so you understand where to go. But I wanted you to understand if you didn't want to get into the detail of the five-year plan, I pulled and extracted out a summary into this twenty twenty-four draft budget. And what I'm used to doing with municipalities is comparing twenty-three to twenty-four and telling you what changed. That's what I tried to do. I tried to give you an understanding and it's a lot of work. There's, there is a hundred and twenty-five services of which I counted, just to make sure I was giving you the right number. And uh there's a lot of information for you to take in. I don't expect you to look at it all, trying to give you the highlights. Uh, when we are going through this information together, I am going to stick to the twenty twenty-four draft budget document. This is a high-level summary. If you want line-by-line detail on a department, that is within the five-year financial plan. Another thing I can say is that the five-year financial plan you used to approve was unrealistic. If you would have looked at your tax requisition impact out in the second year, it went up twenty-four, twenty-five percent. And that's because your surpluses, you can't budget for surplus. So your surplus comes in, it reduces taxation, surplus goes away, taxation jumps right up. I don't like that. I don't like that I'm giving you a plan that you're going to approve, that no one really acknowledges that the next five years are even realistic. So what I did is I used reserve funds to try and help bridge that gap. And we've also done a focused, intentional focus on reducing those surpluses. Uh, that meant moving money from surplus to reserves in some case where it was meant for capital. I'm not taking you line by line through departmental surpluses. Uh, that information is provided within the document uh by department by service summary. And what I've shown you is we've committed to the finance committee to try and use a ten percent uh gauge for surplus. So if the departmental expenditures um are a certain total, we're targeting ten percent of that to try and stay within that for a surplus. But that means good use of our reserve funds and making sure there is, is reserves there to fund capital. We also, uh, as some of um my peers have said, they did cuts uh in wages. We have done cuts in supplies and, and services where we could uh to make sure that we were bringing in line budgets with actual. The previous, the previous focus here was surpluses worked in our favor. If, if we bring in, uh, if we have a few million dollars in surplus, that surplus does truly carry forward to the next year and reduce the amount of taxation. So overall, it was just a practice that we're trying to change. Um, so it's just takes a little bit of a different planning uh approach. Also pulling the capital out of the operating budget so that you have a capital plan and an operating plan. You will have both of those. So what I want you to understand, when we go into provisional in December, what you used to do is you used to approve a provisional five-year capital or financial plan bylaw. And then change it for March. What I'm going to request you to do is I want you to e- approve a five-year capital plan because we need to see her cost for capital. Capital carryforwards um are committed to capital. Uh, we don't need to reapprove those. So hopefully you guys will accept that we approve a five-year capital plan to help in the tendering process. And then from there, approve a five-year provisional budget. And that provisional budget will just let us carry on with business until we do the bylaw in March. We are going to have, so as I go through this, if you have questions as I'm going through, certainly ask them. What I would ask is if you have direction or motions, what I would say in general, if you have a suggestion for us that you'd like to incorporate and everybody kind of feels comfortable with that, we'll move with that. If you have a, a direct decision that you would like to have made that is substantial, we probably would do a motion for that. What I would like though is we're gonna wrap that up with the parking lot at the end. So that you guys will have your opportunity to kind of address any of those things you want us to, to bring forward in the provisional. I'll take you through, um, we do know there are a couple parking lot items. And I think uh Greg's gonna kind of keep track of those parking lot items for me. So we'll come back at the end, but certainly ask questions during if you, if you'd like. Please remember, we're just gonna go through the draft budget package. Uh, I know last year I was jumping back and forth trying to show you how to maneuver through the documents. And of course their page numbers cover my page numbers and it was, was a little bit of a mess. So uh, I think the pages of the agenda package are page twenty two forty-one. And it's in that area. I think this is uh fairly straightforward. If you have a way to, to maneuver through these at home and you have further questions, uh, you know, both of that, or if you have any detail, I'll have to jump maybe to another one. I may sit down at my computer and jump to that microphone if there's information I can get you that's at my fingertips. So what I think I'm gonna do now is uh Director O'Connor is having trouble hearing me through this microphone. So I think as I continue, I will sit down and use that microphone and hopefully that, that helps her hear better. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here. We've talked about it. We're, we're giving you uh better visuals and better information to help you understand and help your constituents understand what levels of government are for, what they do. We have, which I could not do this last year because the process was so manual. We've made quite a few improvements. I'm doing uh two months worth of work in two to three weeks. So I'm able to pull this information together much more quickly. This, of course, is the taxation requisition amount. Uh, this has each of your electoral areas and the impact between twenty-three and twenty-four and the percent change of those areas, we have met with each electoral area. These numbers jump all around. Um, lots to do sometimes with services specific to those areas. This is the visual document that we created. Remember the first set of services uh that everybody has are regional services. Those are ones everybody pays into electoral areas and municipalities. We get into, I think, starting at uh E nine-one-one and uh into a certain section where all but Kamloops pays into. Please remember with all the regional services, Kamloops does pay uh the larger percent on, just because of assessment. Uh, the distribution of regional services is divided by assessment value and then allocated out that way. The services that Kamloops wouldn't uh partake in, of course, are nine-one-one. They have their own and, and they have a separate contract with us on that. Uh, also things like building services. Uh, they have their own building services. So that's un- unique in some of those cases. We then have what we uh define as specified service areas. So that's within your area or sometimes crossing boundaries. We have circled an area of constituents that live in that area that want a certain service. So those ones have been separated out on a little bit of a separate section to show you those separate services. And the co, we, what we've tried to do, uh, and we've seen a request for this is in, include cost per thousand, cost per a hundred thousand and cost per six hundred and eighty thousand, just to guy, give you guys a different way to uh tell your constituency residents uh how this relates to them. And give you totals, total impacts. We have all the municipalities and municipality totals and uh they go up and down, but fairly consistently. Uh, this will be affected by the assessments. So please remember that these tax impact calculations are based on the tw- twenty-two B C assessment values that we use to calculate twenty-two. that we use to calculate 2023 budget. We don't actually have updated values. They'll give us the first completed role in December and then they give us a revised role. Supposed to be the end of February, beginning of March. And then we have to turn that around really quick because our deadline is March 31st for approval of that five-year plan. Please remember, all this information is in the taxation booklet as well. And it's, it's very easy to pick out that information and Colton has that available too, that you can print PDF on our website. So that you can share, as was said, the CAOs, the CFOs in your municipalities will want that to help calculate their own budgets as well. So I'm not going to go through this. I just want to remind you of some of the, the things we talked about at the beginning that are already impacting the increase in the budget. Remember those transfers from reserves that are subsidizing solid waste and development services in order to keep those tax rates down. This was a neat thing that I, I looked at last year and I thought was really interesting. And I went back to 2013 and I said, okay, based on the tax requisitions at that point in time, if we did a 1% increase since that time on those tax requisitions, where would we be? That's that orange line and it's about 25 million. And they said, okay, if we use CPI and we took that, that 2013 number and we put CPI on those tax requisitions, where would we be? 29.7 million. Where's our budget? 23.6, 23.7. So, you know, great, that's good for us. But is it, what I, what I'm concerned about is in areas like with, when COVID hit and we made decisions to subsidize operations from reserves and then immediately couldn't sustain that and two years later, and then we had to do a big tax increase to make that, make that up. And then we empty reserves. So I, I feel a little bit hypocritical or contradictory because I've said we're using reserves to subsidize solid waste and development services. The only way I could do that and feel good about putting that plan in front of you, number one, is that those reserves were operating reserves that were being built up to help in this, this case. If you think development services, they don't have a lot of capital. Where I get worried is when we're taking a whole bunch of reserves to use and we have a infrastructure gap that we're trying to pay for capital. So I was very cognizant of that. Also in the five-year plan where we're using those surpluses to offset taxation, we're decreasing the reliance on that, that reserve coming in every year. So that in the five-year plan, at the end of the five years, that service is self-sustaining. It is the only way with the pressures going on without changing service levels. So certainly you could impact the, the costs of the service if you want to change the service level or the service we provide. At this point in time, we didn't go there. So there's lots of budget enhancements within the document enhanced graphics. I have put in there expenditure and revenue by category, which I think is interesting. If you wanted to look at wages or equipment costs across the TNRD, it's an interesting way to look at those, those things. Some will enjoy looking at those things more than others. And I know which one of you like looking at those. So there's then expenditures by department. And I put this in there and I've, I've kind of focused a bit on here summary wise, but this is where we live. This, when we're working as staff, we, we run as departments and each department is responsible for a set of services, of which I followed up with an email to you that said, hey, you might not know what services are in the department. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a thing that says, here, here's a cheat sheet of where to look. So hopefully for some of you, that might have been a concern that helped you. Then, and then we have the enhanced tax by municipality and cost per thousand dollar documents that we've given to help. So the general operating revenues, you can see it's going from 75 to 60. The difference there, remember, is we had about $20 million of capital last year. So what I tried to do for comparison is back out that capital and then compare apples to apples. Next year it'll be way easier. And then you'll, you can really see the consistency in the department costs, consistency in the service costs. So just remember that when you're going in and you're looking at 2023 numbers and that difference that it's, that it's high. And there's still, when I, when I take out the capital, there's still a bit of an increase in expenses. And that doesn't directly correlate to the increase required in taxes. Cause remember, we pay for our expenditures by many different ways, user fees, grants, reserves, surpluses and taxation. So where, where our expenses have gone way up, in some cases, that's because we have grant money like FireSmart, where we have $700,000 of expense, but we have an offsetting $700,000 grant revenue to support it. But when we compare expenses, it's an increase. So just a visual to show you how much taxation, when I break down all our revenue, where, where the revenue is breaking down, large percent. I mean, we have 9% grant, 9% fees, 4% reserve funds and eight surplus. And please ignore the minus that, that I should have weeded out. With our financial system, in our financial system, revenues show up as negatives. I have to, where I extract all that information, I have to take the negatives out. And with 200 sheets of paper, I forgot to take the negatives out on this page. So my apologies. So we have the expenses by category, breaks down different kind of categories, communications, chemical purchases, contractors, MFA debt. Remember that MFA debt on there is a flow-through. We, we are on the books for the MFA debt. We have in, there's $11 million in actual debt, but we put 13 just because a new loan or something could come through. They pay us for that. We pay on their behalf. So it's a flow-through. So when I, I get to the bottom, everybody, I think, always kind of focuses in on the wages. Cause of course, the, the province gets it, but the municipal government still gets it as well. I consider us the poor government, but we have a lot of ability to influence direct services. But we are that, there's a lot of administration and, and it comes out through wages. We're about 32% of our budget, which I think is actually reasonable as compared to other regional districts. And if you, if you recall, when I talked about wage increases across the organization being at 4%, right here, I can show you at 1%. And that's because of the large reduction we made that Jenny had brought up in the library. And we have made reductions where we could across the organization where we found maybe that, that we weren't achieving actual there. So we've just taken a really hard look at that. There will be some impacts there because also director wages are in there. In whatever is decided on by the EA's and directors as far as their base pay, their expenditures. But the, the, the base pay, which might be a suggestion coming forward to the board is for some increase there. And also the policy does support a CPI increase that hasn't been paid for 2023. So we need to make sure that that, that's taken into consideration in there as well. So I'm, I'm not going to go over the numbers again and duplicate. This just gives you an opportunity to see the budget. Again, revenues are a negative by department and revenues directly offset expenditures. So they will be the exact same total unless I have flubbed up and missed something. I know in utilities, it shows that it's out a dollar here and $2 there. And my OCD wanted to fix that, but I left it. So the expenditures are the exact same. So this is where I show the comparison where I'm trying to back out the capital. So you can see the comparison. Just kind of walked you through that step by step. So it's like, hey, remember we had this growing communities grant that kind of skewed numbers? That's not in there this year because we just moved it to the reserve in the capital expenditures. And remember I said 20 million? Well, 8 million of that is utilities. So it's not on the operating budget. The, there's a utilities fund budget and there's an operating fund budget and utilities is shown separately. So that's the difference in the number there, just in case some of you are trying to catch me the wrong number. So the operating expenditure increases about 5.9%. So again, I'm not going to go through this, but for those of you that like justification in numbers, I, I really do want to feel like you've come here and felt like you've made a difference. But what I also want you to see is we've done a lot of work upfront to hopefully appease what we anticipated you would want us to do. This is a, a pretty high overview that summarizes where I see a lot of the change happening. Now you remember, we make changes, $5,000 here, you know, 10 there. And I'm not trying to highlight those changes, but the ones I thought were more significant, I tried to highlight. What I want to point out to you that you would see, if you looked at your taxation document, general administrative services is one of the highest percentage increases. So I want to remind you so that you can support this cybersecurity position you supported. That's the additional wage increase there. Changing capital onto its own budget. We needed to fund a capital plan. You're supposed to have a funded capital plan. So in order to do that, I have to indirectly fund capital by transferring money to reserves. So there are larger reserve transfers than you might have seen before. In administrative services, it's for, one of the things we didn't do well here is put money away for our administrative building, our mission plats, our vehicles, because maybe it was felt like admin didn't deserve to have those things. You want to keep good staff and good people. You have to make sure they have a, a great place to work and a roof that doesn't leak, preferably. So I've worked those into the plan and hopefully you'll support me in that with those reserve transfers. And the other large component of that is the IT infrastructure reserve transfer. That didn't exist before we started it last year to make sure that a lot of the infrastructure that we have and that we're going to, there's money going away to pay for that. If you looked to the reserve schedule, you will see reserves going down and contributing to the capital from those reserve funds. So you can see movement in there. Trying to make sure I've captured the, the biggies, the regional grant need program. So we, we increased that from $20,000 to $50,000 because there's a need. So that $30,000 increase is part of that general admin increase, that 30,000. And then remember, high administrative wage costs in that area. So when wages go up, you're going to see a larger increase every year. Because as those agreements are negotiated, we have to build those increases in. So if there is any question in regards to the general administrative increase that you felt that I, I wasn't able to answer there, if you have questions on that, please, I mean, feel free to bring those forward and I'll try to answer those ones. There, oh, go ahead. Director Grenier?
I don't know if it's the right time, but I'd like to have an opportunity to ask you about capital and, and operating reserves, whether there is a, a distinction other than you've allocated them, like is there a restriction that you have to live by? I know that we have silos in the EA's, but I'm not sure that on these general expenses, we have restrictions on the movement of funds into capital reserves or operating reserves. Could you educate me on that, please?
Thank you Chair, through to the directors. There will be an opportunity where we will go into capital and reserves, but I will answer that question. We have no policy that, that puts restrictions on reserves or what should be in them. I've kind of right now used the approach, a conservative approach where I need to understand what the needs are. One of the things we've done is really make sure that the reserves are attached to projects so we can justify their existence. So I certainly could delve into that. Right now I'm trying to make sure that where there's capital, one of the best practices is to look at amortization. And because we have no limits, if we have, you know, $10,000 or sorry, $10 million worth of capital, does it make sense to have 10% of, of that cost put into a reserve or more? I'm, I'm more used to saying if there's $500,000 worth of amortization, we should probably take three times that and transfer it into a reserve every year and come up with a base. Part of what we're going to be doing with asset management is trying to define those parameters and have you endorse policies that will guide that. So right now, let's say I'm, I'm using a 10, 15% number, maybe where operating is concerned. And with capital, I'm trying to target what the amortization is. But that, it's, it's really a shot in the dark now, right now with that, because I don't have a good grasp of what our infrastructure gap is.
Just supplemental to that, and I don't want to get into the details, that's for sure. What I'm just trying to understand, RTNRD last year had capital and operating reserves, according to your numbers, of just under $43 million. That's $43 million that, that has been allocated between capital and operating reserves or falls into those categories. We're moving into 2024 and your projections using some of those reserves for whatever it is that you've decided is the appropriate presentation, we're now down to 39,324. So we've used three and a half million dollars of operating and capital reserves from 2023 to 2024 to achieve your, your budget numbers. And specifically, is there, is there any restriction that you face in moving monies into categories called capital reserves and operating reserves? Or is it just fluid? You could do it as you, as the board approves it?
Thank you Chair, through to the directors. So there's, there's specific areas where that reduction is coming from and that solid waste management and development services. Specifically, those are, those are the major draws down on the reserves right now. The, can I get you to repeat the, the last part of that question?
I just simply wanted to make sure that I understand if there, if, when you make a proposal to shift funds from operating reserve to capital reserve, is that because some statutory thing or is that a planning item? Because if it's a planning item, I, I appreciate the, the proposal, but that should be something that directors should be very alive to and should agree with you or disagree with you. If, if there is no restriction on moving monies back and forth between capital and operating reserves, then as a board, we can sit here and say, okay, one way or another, we've got going into 2024, $39 million in reserves to achieve whatever it is we want to do. But I'm just trying to understand if you're, if you have a, a requirement like we would in an EA where you can't take it from one category into another.
Yes. So number one, each service's reserves belong to that service and you can't move reserves out of that service. That would be number one guide. Number two, previous, the TNRD created capital reserve bylaws for every capital reserve they had. So other than a couple that were created last year, there is a bylaw or policy, policy, Barney, where are you? For, for every capital reserve. So that puts parameters around it that is general around, make sure it's spent on capital and, and some specifics around there. It doesn't say bring this to the board. However, the board's conduit to be able to support that and is through the budget process. There has been no process built in where we work with board to allocate. We do that internally and then hope that what we bring forward makes sense. And we've provided the documents to show that we aren't draining the reserves. I certainly would like stronger parameters of limits because it protects you and me and the TNRD from making sure we don't drain reserve funds. There has been only two cases where there is an operating reserve created, solid waste management. There's a very large, Um, solid waste management, there's a very large, uh, it's identified as an operating reserve. Uh, working with the team this year and starting to take some of that money to balance out the tax rates. Which in some sense was doing done, it was being done before because capital and operating were embedded together and solid waste has huge amounts of capital in it. So there's big fluctuation, fluctuation. So it would be hard for you to know if the reserve coming in was to support capital or operating because it was embedded together. So in those cases there, I have made a a direct in intentional uh attempt to move money in solid waste and separate that in, and I've put five million dollars into a solid waste capital reserve. Can only be spent in solid waste and it was being used for capital, but I'd like it just defined as capital. So I have done that. There's a ten million dollar balance in solid waste reserve. So that left money in there to continue to use to in operating to balance it out. I am doing that in consultation with my team um and the information that they have following the legislation that guides us. When we create a by a bylaw or a policy for a reserve, we're creating a statutory reserve. So when I inquired with the province, because I had never seen this before, that we were creating bylaws for every reserve that we had, they came back and said, you actually don't need to do that. Um, but up until I got that answer, I was being told that that's what we're supposed to do. Um, we don't need statutory reserves for every reserve we have. Um, so I am looking at trying to bring something forward in general around reserves. Uh, a a policy from the board that says what you'd like me to consider and what balances and and those sorts of things. Um, and and hopefully I can target that into next year. That isn't something, um, not to that depth. I don't have yet. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions right now? Director Rain?
I'm just noticing two, two point four million dollars in reserve funds under library. What's the purpose of of the reserve? Is that a operating or capital?
Thank you, Chair, uh, through the directors. I'm I'm just going to jump into the capital plan here. Um, but what I'll do is I'll I'll answer that and then we will actually go in to talk about the the reserves once we get through the operating. Um, the library reserve uh has in the five-year plan, if you were to look at the library, um, especially if you'd go into the five-year financial plan, there is a detailed list of all the projects that are dedicated um to those funds. So it targets uh different upgrades at different libraries at different times over the years from from upgrading the facilities to roofs. Um, there is, just give me one sec, because I'm trying to speak and I got to search for it here. All right, so previously, uh, every year, the money was being put in uh in the operating budget and it was showing for uh money there for Sun Peaks, it was showing money there for Litton. Um, and it was showing money there for uh another one of the libraries and we, it was like a placeholder. So what I've suggested is rather than keep putting those forward, if we don't actually think we're doing those in the year, let's keep the money earmarked in the reserve, um, and then shoot out this this plan. So right now I have one point one million dollars worth of library capital budgeted in uh twenty-four, one point five million in twenty-five, one million in twenty-six, one point one in twenty-seven and one point three. So we, we're making sure we're utilizing the reserves and we're also um making contributions uh when when we're running short over that five-year plan. Um, most of the the money sitting in there is dedicated towards uh capital. There is no money uh right now coming out of the reserves to support operational costs. Supplemental and then Director Grenier?
Yeah, no, the yeah, okay, I understand that, that's and the solid waste. As you were, inflationary costs were two point two million above last year and I guess I'm sure it's staff must have looked at saying, are there areas where we could do have some savings in there and uh, obviously, the conclusion was none. I'm just how how in depth was the process to look at potential savings on the uh solid waste?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm going to pass it over to Jamie and Adriana is also here and I can guarantee you there's a ton of work done in this budget.
Yeah, um, thanks. So through the chair, uh, totally fair question. So uh, the, yeah, the inflationary costs or the the cost change was a result of this contract that was approved by the board, which saw, yeah, one point eight million dollar just straight across the board contract cost increase. Knowing that was going to be a significant increase, um, going back to Carla's opening comments, we spent, Adriana and her team spent a lot of time going through the line by line item and already carving out a bunch of uh costs that were in there um to make sure we were um budgeting, you know, to the penny as best we could estimate. Um, so we're confident that, you know, all the cuts that we could find without actually reducing service have been done. So we're at the point now that if we wanted to reduce costs further, then it would, things like operating hours would have to change or facility or closures, things like that.
Excuse me, one last follow-up, I must say, overall, the various staff departments have done a good job here. I think that with the the exception of the two areas, library and solid waste. I mean, we're, we're actually below in many cases. And and certainly I have to say thank you for the staff who looked and said, hey, these are taxpayers' money, what services are we providing? Where can we reduce costs? Well done.
And just a note on that, it was interesting in the survey that we saw, the the feedback that Colton shared with us, people indicating they wanted more services and they were willing to pay for it as well. Uh, that's what the overall the message was. So I think that when we, when it comes to tax increase time to to let people know that these things do cost money, you've indicated that you want these services. And if you want your tax rates to go down or you don't want to be paying as much, then it's going to be cutting the hours that the libraries open or cutting the hours that the eco depots open. I have Director Grenier on my list. Anyone else with their hands up? Director Grenier, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to use the library as, uh, because we've been talking about library. And um, if I've got this correct, in twenty twenty-three, we had a capital and an operating surplus in the library of three million nine. And in twenty twenty-four, library is now four million nine. So one way or another, there's a million dollars increase in the capital reserves in the library. And these are, this is taken off this sheet. Uh, um, Director Fox, I don't know if that's useful to put it up on the board because what I want to point out is that there is a transfer capital in twenty twenty-three, the library capital was six hundred and thirty-five thousand. But the capital in twenty twenty-four with the allocations that are recommended is three million six. So we've had a fundamental shift from operating reserves to capital reserves. And we've also had an increase in the library capital reserves itself. Now, I know we've all been talking about libraries and we've got a Sun Peaks for seven fifty and a Kamloops library. I can't remember what the number is. But it seems to me that if we're making a shift from a a surplus of operating from library, the board should be quite alive to the fact that we're moving three million of the surplus into capital before we've decided whether we are going to, uh, whether that's the right thing to do. Maybe it is the right thing to do. We've also increased the surplus of library by a million. We also project forward, because this is just twenty twenty-two, three to twenty twenty-four, we're continually building that reserve for library. And we're still dealing with the issue of what, when, where? Um, what's the timing of it? And my, my concern is that some of these things get buried into the budget or they are staff's recommendation that we have to consider. Uh, but in this particular case, in the case of library, we actually have an increase in reserves and we have a a change, a fundamental change in allocation. Using solid waste, we've gone from sixteen million down to twelve million and that four million dollars, one way or another, is working itself into the increased cost of which we've already approved the increased cost of that contract for solid waste. But I still think that there's decisions to be made on things like library and things like the size of the surplus. So maybe we'll put that in the parking lot thing because it's taken a lot of time here and there's lots more to go through, but it is a concern that I have that that we've got to, the the directors have to approve whether they agree that there's an increase in that capital reserve of that extent, six hundred thousand to three point six million dollars in capital reserve for library.
Thank you, Chair, through to the board. So um, number one, uh, there was a direction suggested that surplus needed to be addressed. Year over year, library has been carrying forward surplus that was tagged for capital and there were board decisions attached to that capital. So um, it is my understanding that the board made a decision to put money aside for Sun Peaks Library. They made a decision to put money aside for the Kamloops Library. Um, it's, and there's money every year that goes through. So that this is a, it's kind of a complex response to a complex question. So we were to reduce the surplus, moved that money into the reserve. You also had two grants provided uh to the library in twenty twenty-three, just over one point two million dollars. That also added to your reserve. Um, there was money being paid for uh and tagged as capital through board direction. Yet there was only one reserve on your list of a hundred reserves. Uh, only one library reserve. So from my perspective, if you made direction to put money away for capital, it should go into a capital reserve. So absolutely, I did transfer money into the library capital reserve. Um, where it was understood that it was supposed to be attached to capital. Um, so I tried to to do that. I, I can tell you that if the board would like to create a a meeting or a workshop to go through uh all the reserves and capital and be a part of that decision-making, um, I'd like you to build that into your calendar and book at least three days. Um, you, I'm okay if that's the level that you want to be involved. I don't know what you guys have done here before. Alls I know is what the planning we can do as a staff in order to bring this to you in this timeline. We've extended our limit in time and resources. So I don't mind. You just have to give us more time and resources and more of your time. And I don't know if if that's the will of the board. Um, certainly, I try to capture the the bigger ticket items uh for you and highlight those. I might miss some. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts uh within a hundred and twenty-five services and a brand new uh tenure capital plan that we're trying to fund. And also trying to educate staff on how to do a tenure capital plan, how to fund a tenure capital plan and then do it in an Excel program. Um, that requires a lot of uh tweaks and editing to make sure it balances on two hundred pages. So that that's my, my little bit of my, let's say, whining is that um the amount of time to bring you what I did today ex- extended the amount of time I have. So I don't mind. But you can imagine just talking about two reserves here is taking quite a bit of time just here to to inform you. And then it's try to try and educate you on on limits and and different things that I'm I'm doing based on best practice and and my experience to try and use the team to make those decisions. So sorry, I I know it's a convoluted answer to try and tell you that we're doing our best work to bring it forward. And I don't know how to get more of your time to get that deep in those sorts of decisions. But I I'll do my best to to try and flag those items for you. Do you have a supplemental, Director Grenier?
Very quickly. The increase of library from three point nine to four point nine, you've pointed out that there was some grants, so that would explain a million dollar increase. But the choice that this board has when it's looking at its surplus is to do what you've done, which is maybe we need to take more surplus than you've taken, maybe we need to take less surplus. But but the board does need to look at what you're doing with the surplus and the movement from operating into capital. Um, uh, suggests that rather than reduce taxes for library to our constituents globally, we've decided to continue and increase the capital reserve. We've, we've chosen to do that through this budget. So this board is approving that increase towards capital if it follows the recommendation. I just want the board to be alive to that because because we're making a decision about library, but we're really not here talking specifically about a library, but our actions in the budget are doing that. And I think you would, uh, you would agree with that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, through to the board. Just quickly, I I agree that there's lots of things where we're using our professional experience uh and relying on each other um for information, also using legislation or uh facilities, master plans or master planning documents or policies or bylaws to guide the decisions that we're making to try and best practice and and across the organization. Um, there, there's lots of rules and regulations that we, we all try and bring to the decisions. But absolutely, I I'm making decisions on this budget. Uh, and I'm not going to be able to cover all the things we've decided. What I can tell you is that every dollar of the surplus in twenty twenty-four plus more has been transferred to the reserve and that's a a deliberate requirement because the five-year financial plan, we had to be able to meet all all the costs in there uh over the five and ten-year plan. So we're trying to to make sure that we're building that up.
Thank you. And I I would have no interest or aptitude in being on a committee that looked at surpluses because that is not in my wheelhouse whatsoever. However, I will say that my understanding of it is that this board in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty did approve uh going ahead with pursuing uh property or facilities for a South Kamloops library. And we also approved, this board approved the library strategic plan. So I would have thought that without doing a deep dive into the weeds and and below that, that was this board as a collective whole approving pursuing these capital projects and that the transfer from surplus into cap or operating into capital would reflect uh decisions that have been made by this board in the previous one. Uh, or am I being far too simplistic?
No, that, thank you, Chair. That's exactly what what um I was trying to get across. I I have relied on uh Judy, Jenny, Scott and and other directors um as well as legislative services uh to look at reports uh of information and decisions. So that was why it was felt that that surplus belonged and was tagged towards those capital projects. And Director O'Reilly, I saw your hand in the air.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and uh similar thoughts to what you had said, but I mean, this is only my second term. I know a lot of people have been here around a lot longer. But I found uh last, last term as well as this term, the, this is truly our first real budget that this board has collectively because we basically inherited the last one. And we just kind of went through and drinking from our fire hose, as you've mentioned. And the decisions that we've made as a board over the last year is where staff have come up with these numbers. And and when it's, it's, you you think more purposefully when you make decisions after this is our first full budget than when we're adding on a new cybersecurity position or changing uh that we have these, you know, capital ask for libraries that we all agreed on the library master plan that we wanted. And so now staff are taking the direction that that we wanted. And so now staff are taking the direction that collectively the board gave them. And this is what we have now in front of us. And, and it's no different than what we're dealing with at the City of Kamloops right now. And we went through this yesterday for about ninety minutes on, uh, on uh, utility rate increases. I'm sure you've all heard of twenty five percent this year because of decisions that we made in, in during this term. And, and so I think staff have done what we have asked them to do over the last year. And now this is what's in front of us outside of inflationary pressures. But, but um, as, as um, uh, Director Fox had said, she's done everything she can to keep it down from a twenty percent piece. Um, so I think holistically, they, they're done what we've asked them to do. And now we're here to, to listen what they presented. We can make tweaks, but um, but nonetheless, we made a lot of decisions, a lot of great decisions and bold decisions in the last year, but this is what's now in front of us with, with these increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Director, uh, Director Hotten and then CEO Hildebrand.
Yeah, I appreciate uh, Director Grenier's in-depthness and, and Director Ains. I know it's way over my head. I got this document and and this is way beyond me, but I appreciate your in-depthness and how you, you, you know, you dive into this, but I also appreciate the finance staff and the team behind for what they've done. I surely believe done the best he can. I know you guys have done the best you can to for your in-depthness. So I, I just want to thank both sides. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Chair Oden. Just, just wanted to sum that up as well. Thank you for all the comments, the discussion. We feel like whatever the board's asking us to do, we would just, whatever direction the board would wants us to do, we will certainly do. We have done that over the years and will continue to do that. But we need the entire board to get, give us that direction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this moment in time? No. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. So really in that departmental uh, and category expenditure list, it, it really summarizes at a high level where the shifts and changes were. That, that total I'm trying to explain to you and, and make sure that you are comfortable and understand is that three point four million dollar expenditure increase and making sure that you understand where that's all coming from. Um, there is, and I, I obviously can't go line by line and go through everywhere. I have put those explanations for the changes following this page um, and tried to detail out pluses and minuses uh, in a high level to, to get you there. The, the biggest challenge I have is coming from municipal to regional district and trying to show, I want to give you all the information that you want. Some things we, we just don't have time and then we make the liberties of making those decisions. So hopefully you can see, uh, and even if you stopped and, and wanted us to go down a different, different path, we would certainly do that. We just need to be given the, the dedicated time to do so. The utility fund is something we don't focus a whole lot on. It, it's not tax driven, it's user fee driven. Um, there are increases within the utilities. Uh, you did hear this morning from uh, Jamie and the team with Tyrone here, the challenge of the small group of individuals uh, that try and keep these systems going that really aren't sustainable. We got grant money, we put it all together and we try and maintain it and then we don't put money away in reserves and, and uh, then all of a sudden the system needs to be replaced and we can hardly fund it. So tho- those challenges are there. We've done a, I, I think um, addressed a couple issues. One, we had on uh, the electoral administrative budget, a line that was called utility services expenditures and uh, utilities revenues. So what we were doing is utilities administration, we're kind of flowing through the electoral admin budget to make sure if there was any deficit there that they had kind of a backup. What we found in working with Tyrone over the last year is we've made a real uh, intentional effort to remove that reliance. So you'll no longer see, if you went into that detail, you won't see. And it, it really was here's eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars of revenue coming in from all the utility services for admin costs. Uh, here's an expense of those, the other admin costs of eight hundred thousand. So it, its intent was to zero itself out, but sometimes it didn't. Sometimes there was more revenue, uh, sorry, uh, less revenue and more expenses. So there was surplus and deficits being created there. We've actually been able to eliminate that altogether, that flow through. So uh, and one of the, so we've tried to have the, the management staff that were being supported through that EA budget also um, have moved a, an employee right back to the, the utilities, utilities admin. That's required some uh, service fee increases in those services to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and keeping the utilities fund separate from the operating fund, which is legislative. So we're, we're really making efforts to, to try and improve in little ways that we can. So we've done that. Um, and I think over the five year plan, there uh, there's a increase in uh, I might get this wrong. There's a increase in water of two percent and sewer of ten percent uh, to try and, try and keep up with the, the costs there. But really it's, it's very minimal just to try and do what we can in those budgets. I'll let Jamie add on to the utilities. If there's anything more he wants to share with you, and then if there's any questions on the utilities fund.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Carl. Just briefly on, on the process, the, the fee, uh, the, the fees that we built in in terms of anticipated increase in fees. Uh, that doesn't actually get approved through this budget. That gets set through bylaw. So we're planning for it in this budget, but the utilities committee in December will be having a, an in-depth discussion of what those fees look like and making a recommendation that's going to go up to the board for adopting a bylaw that sets that fees, just in terms of the process of those fees being adopted.
Very quickly.
Can you?
Thank, thank you. Very quickly, uh, City Kamloops just uh, made some adjustments to their fees. And I know that you had spoken about fees at the last uh, uh, solid waste meeting. Could you uh, at that meeting, the upcoming meeting, uh, let us know if there's any differences? I don't think we want to be able to sync with the City of Kamloops on fee structure.
That, 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 through the chair, that's a loaded question because our fees are already higher than the City of Kamloops. Uh, so um, we're already way out of.
We're, we're, no, but weren't we proposing increases based on uh, relative communities? And perhaps you could bring that back to us at the next meeting so we could make sure that we don't have a challenge uh, at the T and R D on fees.
Uh, y- yes, we will look at fee comparison there uh, for sure. Just, just for context to see what other regional districts and the municipalities are at. But the, just a reminder for the whole board that the challenge with utilities is it's a user pay system. So when you have forty users on a system that has a whole bunch of fixed costs, uh, it's very difficult to manage and that's, that's the challenge. But point taken.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Oh. All right, CFO Fox.
Uh, thank you Chair through to the board. So uh, just a page in there that breaks down the expenditures by sewer system, water system, and in the center you can kind of see that utilities admin. So of course there's lots of costs that we cost direct to the utility systems. Um, and then there's cases where we're charging wages, engineering costs and some contract costs to the, the regional, let's say administer utilities admin and charging that out when we can um, and trying to, to offset that. I didn't see that, Director Smith. No, no, no yawning. I'll, I'll try and pep it up a little. So uh, again, the administration total. And this is new. You didn't get to this level before. So this, we really have done some work. Uh, you'll see the new business support uh, budget on here. You have the CAO's office, communications, corporate ledge, uh, Fraser Basin, general administration, uh, information technology, the legislative directors and legislative EA. What I want to just make clear, legislative directors is all of you. There's some cost specific just to EA that end up in the legislative EA budget. Um, and remember the difference there. All of you pay for legislative directors. Only the EAs split and pay for the legislative EA. And that has some very specific wages in there for some operations people, some, the fire uh, training officer. Uh, it has uh, Cherry and Joe, the community support services uh, out there. So just so you know, um, the difference between those two budgets. And if you were to dive in, because I get asks uh, questions about what do we cost? What is the training cost? What is our budget? Um, if you were to dive into that admin area and go to that sheet, you would see some line by line in the five year plan on those detailed costs. Uh, people and engagement for HR and facilities. Uh, remember with facilities, a little tidbit, we do have a strata and a lot of the facilities costs get um, sharing, shared uh, with our strata. So community services, I won't read through all these. I gave you a list of what services are under community services. What I want you to um, make sure you delved into is there's increases and decreases in each of these. Um, I'd like to highlight there's a lot of decreases. The team has done a lot of work to, to really capture um, savings where they could. That was integral to making this work this year. Um, we won't be able to keep peeling down like that every year. Uh, the overall budget there, you can see uh, going down, but remember this capital embedded in twenty three. The development services uh, envelope with uh, going from three point two to two point seven. Again, with the decreases, only a little bit of capital in there. We did a large transfer to reserve uh, last year. Um, and uh, you don't see that this year. So there's a little bit of a decrease there. The film commission, pretty much on par. Uh, not, not much. Uh, although they do great work, there's not much to talk about here right now.
It's all right, Director Hadwin doesn't appear to be here, so.
She isn't. She has some very important business she's working on right now.
Oh.
And uh, library services. So again, this is where uh, you'll see a reflection of um, Jenny stepping in uh, with Judy. She had a, a lot of new stuff to take on. Um, this is a, it's a very large uh, piece of the work that we do and it required a, a really good look uh, under the microscope as we peeled back things here. I mean, it's not very often I can come and say we've cut over four hundred thousand dollars worth of wages. Um, uh, you know, you need to take that in. They're, they're doing some great work here. Uh, we've, we've peeled the capital out of there. Uh, discussions going forward should be easy to have between operations and capital because you won't see them embedded in there. Easier, easier. I won't say easy. So protective services, uh, again, here's a, a list of all the different fire departments. You'll see nine one one in here. I think it, it says regional on here. That regional is is uh, regional nine one one. And uh, the fire smarting program is in the center. That's where I talked about that seven hundred thousand dollars coming in and grant, being grant funded. So overall, you'll be able to see the increases and decreases there. A large um, amount in the budget is transfers to reserves for fire departments. It isn't something we were very good at and it really was highlighted when we put that ten year capital plan in place. And we thought, oh, we need a new fire truck. Let, let's make sure like that money is going in so that there is money there and we, we don't have to tap into the borrowing. Um, and that we're, we're just doing our due diligence there. So uh, there's, there's absolutely more work to be done here, but um, we've really pulled this together in a short period of time to make sure that there's funding there. But that, that is a large part of that decrease or increase. And like I said, if you want to go into the detail of each of these, um, it is in that five year financial plan document. Solid waste and recycling. I'm not going to spend, we, we've talked this uh, through uh, quite a bit today. Um, you know that there's money coming in from reserves to help keep taxes uh, reasonable. That is not something I typically would come and say to council. I don't like trying to support operations from reserve funds. Uh, you know, we're just trying to understand what's happening in the economy and get creative. Uh, and there's only a couple of reasons I feel confident doing that. I've moved a large portion of that ten million dollars into a capital reserve to support the huge capital needs for all of those different uh, area, areas. And uh, also in development services, there's not a large capital requirement. So I feel comfortable. Uh, but I am trying to keep your reserves at a certain level. I'm not trying to deplete the reserves, but just remember when you're thinking, oh, there's thirty five million dollars in reserves, a third of that is made up by three or four different departments. Ten million dollars of that's just solid waste. So um, I encourage you to go look at the hundred reserves if you want. It's one of the most challenging parts of my job is managing those funds, keeping it all separate. Uh, again, uh, just a look, this is a different look. The other uh, financial statement was by category uh, by service. This is by the, the individual services uh, within the utilities budget. Please um, just understand where you can go to look for that. What I would encourage you, um, because we're not going to sit here, go through line by line. If by December you're going through this over the next couple of weeks and there's questions that you want answered, um, please, we would like your feedback and your emails ahead of time so that we can proactively make sure we understand your needs. Make sure if it's something we think the entire board needs to make a decision on, we bring that to you prior to trying to do a provisional budget in December. It's really hard to bring a provisional budget and then you have ten changes right at that moment. Um, so please, I encourage you, uh, if you have anything, uh, send it to us uh, via email.
Uh, Director Laird just had his hand up.
Yeah, I was on that last slide. How many of those areas are taxed through a specified area that doesn't affect the overall budget? It's a budget item, but are they specified area and collected from that specific area? Any of the like black pines or are those specified area?
Thank you, uh, Chair through to uh, Director Laird. The, please remember this is a utility service. It's a fund. There's no tax for these services. Um, this is all user fee. Uh, there is no regional cost here. So these are all charged specifically to the area. But Jamie, is there anything I'm missing in there?
Uh, no, that, uh, just a clarification that there's a small tax component. It's a parcel tax that we're not seeing here, but the vast majority is through um, user fees. So to, to be clear, no, there's, there's no regional or electoral area wide taxation that goes towards the operating costs of any of our utilities. It's a hundred percent bore by those people within the service area receiving the benefit of the service.
Great. Director Middleton?
Thanks. Just a quick question. Just on, and I don't know if it's an error or typo or a spreadsheet, but we see like evergreen seeing a decrease, but we see a hundred and thirty nine percent variance. And then in Blue River, we see a seventy per, four percent increase. Can you just give a bit of heads up on why the significant increase for Blue River? And why, or is that just a math error on the evergreen?
Well, that's a
I can answer the questions on the, the various percentages don't match the actual uh, various amounts. The various amounts are correct. Um, and as far as Blue River, we realized a significant increase in revenue on miscellaneous revenue from the Trans Mountain camp. And that shows as a transfer reserve, which shows up as an expense in here as well, so.
Thank you. Any further questions? Uh, could someone, are we still on track to finish at around four o'clock as a concluding time? Would everyone like to have a five minute break to stretch their legs and refresh their coffees right now before we plow on to the end? That's a definite yes. All right. Five minutes. Everyone was already halfway to the door, so. All right, thank you very much. We are back to CFO Fox is taking us down the home stretch.
Thank you, Chair Roden. So I'm going to keep us on track. We are going to jump into the capital. We'll look at reserves and surplus. I will just touch on the five year plan, point you in the right direction and we won't go through it. Okay? I love that background laugh. I like, I thought, you know, if I had to kill time at the end and you guys really were like, thought this was riveting and wanted more. I've built in 20 more slides on like five year plan, but you know. All right, so just a reminder, please, this attachment of the 2024 draft budget package, I'm really kind of coasting my way through this. I haven't referred to pages. But there is an index. We are around page 23 at the moment of the 2024 draft budget package, okay? If there's anyone that's trying to follow along through there. The, the last time I did this, it got really confusing for people and they were shifting around trying to go through pages, so. Director Houghton, did you have a question?
It's been an awful long day. What time did you say this tailgate party starting or is that parking lot?
Sorry, Chair Roden, I, I went to Director Houghton without going through you. But it was about tailgate parties and I kind of took precedence. Okay, so, look, we put together a 10 year capital plan. We did our best on the funding. We have really focused on the five year. But we do have the tenure. If we ever have to meet with council and, or the board, council, muscle memory, the board and go through, we probably will do a, a point in time next year where we, we again, look at it with the board. But I'm focusing on the five year right now. So in the beginning, we've broken down the capital by department again. You will see that there's funds and there's expenses to pay, there's funding to, to cover the cost of the capital. What I would like to point out, here, I'll go back first. Right now, the operating budget, 12.8 million was last year, 10.5 million. Really a variance to a budget is, is a little bit strange because it doesn't, it's not consistent. It's all over the map. I'm, I'm not focused on the variance, really. I was really focused on making sure there was funds to pay for the capital in the plan. Utilities, oh, I'm going backwards. I just want to redo that all over again. Okay, so utilities, $8 million to the $4 million. Really, please remember, utilities are really heavily grant funded. The more we look to try and make sure community works and those community building fund is funding the utilities, that, that does help us jump sometimes those projects up in the plan. Once we start allocating those grants to the capital, what you'll see, because right now it shows capital kind of take a dip down in the middle and back up. And that's because we have projects we've had to push out because they have no funds. And we're going to work with the EA's specifically, bring a report to the board for, for community works funds to try and get support to, to support the allocation of those funds towards the capital projects. The capital spending trend, and here I'm even jumping ahead of myself. This is where the dip down goes. Where we're spending less capital in the middle there, but that will go up once I get commitment from the directors and the board on some grant funding to support some projects and we'll bump them up in the plan. You can, you can really see here that the reserves required, I've put zero taxation required. I did get grilled on this once from a, I'm going to say it was a counselor at that time. It wasn't a board member. That we do fund capital from taxation. It's just the way we do it here is indirectly through your transfers to reserves. So just remember, the reserves are really taxes. So just remember, the reserves are really taxes that you've put in a bucket. A reserve bucket. So the grants required 35%. Then there's a bit of donations. I can tell you, there is this wonderful lady that collects bottles or does some sort of donation to help offset the capital cost in one of our fire departments. Loon Lake. It's quite amazing, but it's 1%. So, but I think that's amazing and I just really wanted to point that out. I thought it was awesome. Borrowing required. Right now, the TNRD overall with borrowing, we have $1.6 million in borrowing is very low. So I just wanted to point that out. There, there is necessary borrowing and direct. I call you Director Biara, I want that to go to his head. General Manager Biara, Jamie, talked about the parcel taxes and we didn't talk about parcel taxes. There's a parcel tax that will be coming in for Loon Lake with the borrowing and Black Pines. So we haven't really focused discussions on those. Those are kind of covered by the the people in those areas. They get, I learned a new term coming here, commutation option where they can pay out their debt right away or or do a monthly or a yearly amount for 20 years. Those two things we're working on separately and those areas will see parcel tax. Either for the full year or partial year for Loon Lake, we're not 100%. I just wanted to throw that out there so you guys were aware of that. So I have created, based on somebody's suggestion, a significant capital plan listing so that it fit on one page. So you guys weren't overwhelmed with 13 sheets of capital. Because I'm like, look at us, we're giving them all this detail. They can figure out whatever capital we're doing, they know because it's in that plan. But unless you look through 200 pages, you're probably not going to find it. So here's the the Coles Notes version. This is really important, the funding column. We've done our best to identify where funding is coming from. It's hard because giving you a summed up list and sometimes we get grants and funds and tax from three different places. So I've tried to just summarize that. In the five-year specifically, when we say grant funded, sometimes that means we're trying to find grants. And we're going to reach out to you if there's capital that we have listed as grant funds that we're actually trying to get grants for. And if we don't get grants for it bumps out in the plan. So I just wanted to point that out, that's that column comes important for those types of things. And then at the bottom, there was like, okay, what doesn't fit in this 250 category? There is a lot of projects that are under 250,000 and there's, there's tons in solid waste, there's tons in library. If you want to look at that, and it's too bad Director Stamer isn't here. I remember when I was presenting this and I could show him, I could do these dropdowns and show him whatever project he wanted. And then he asked me, what is this specifically? And I brought it up and it was like, equipment upgrade or it was like really vague in general. So I've really pushed the departments to go through and put some detail in here. So when you look that sometimes you're going to see more than just a general description. Is there any questions on the capital that that you're seeing in 2024 that you wanted information on or to discuss?
Just quickly, and it's not on, this is the one-year plan, the five-year plan, where you have each of the five years and the wish list of projects. I would suggest that you color code, you use three color codes, one that says funded because it's capital, most of these projects are grant funded. So if it's funded, it's green. If it's partially funded, it's orange. And if it's not funded at all, it's yellow. And I would expect on the five-year plan, all the right-hand stuff is yellow. And as we get closer to the current year, hopefully it's all green. Because that means that those projects are a go. But that's in addition to your five-year plan that I think will really solve our, where, you know, where are we on this particular item if you do that color coding?
Thank you Chair through the director. Think it's an interesting and great idea. If you print in black and white to save ink, it might not help you, but I will do my best to build in a a Power BI presentation. Thank you Director Houghton.
The B train trailers, that like the the two trailer system that hauls the blue and green bins from the transfer stations to the landfills?
Through the chair, no, that's the, we have large B train trailers at the large eco depots, Richard and Clearwater. The trucks that haul the bins are owned by the contractors. We own the bins and then we also own the trailers, the B train trailers.
And Director Sal?
Thank you Chair. Before I ask my question, I just want to echo Director O'Reilly earlier that the budget, you know, I understand is the result of what the board has gone through, the decisions throughout the year. So this is more just for my knowledge because the previous slide about the 1.6 million dollars of borrowing. Just as a layperson to accounting, you know, we we talked about having a massive reserve. Why would we borrow, like, this be a benefit to borrowing versus using that reserve?
Thank you Chair through to the directors. So interesting question. First of all, remember with a with 125 services, you basically have 100 pots of money that are very specific only to that service. So in in an area, let's say E911 and say there's no reserve and you need a new repeater. And there's $200,000 in there. You can't take from another reserve, even though we have $30 million, you can't take from another reserve to pay for that. There have been cases where where the board has approved a bit of borrowing from one to another and paying it back. It's not typical. So that would be why we have borrowing. I am not, we're not looking to borrow right now. So the 1.6 I talked about is is old borrowing. We do have a couple of areas where we have new borrowing and it's mainly in fire departments and water utilities or the utilities. And that's because those buckets of money, there's not enough in there. They've hit the bottom. It echoes when you throw money in there. So that's where we have to reach out and and go through MFA and go through the borrowing process. And typically, when they're setting up that service, then doing the service establishment is when you would know there was borrowing because they would know what they needed to deliver that service. And then they they have a referendum and they have to have public consent and you have to go through a whole process before you can even set up the service. So that's unique to the regional district.
Any other questions or comments at this time? No. CFO Fox, continue, thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to keep us on track and make sure you guys have time to to talk about any parking lot or or, you know, projects that you would like to talk about. So just, here's a summary of the reserves. I've I've summed them all up into the different departmental buckets, just so you could see the total. The 42 Director Grigné had referred to going down to 39. I can tell you, even though I'm drawing down on different reserves, we're still maintaining a certain level of reserve through the five, the five-year plan. So I don't think it dips under 30 million through the entire five years. So, you know, in all the work and training that I've done over a large number of years, the capital infrastructure deficit, the gap. We got to understand, we need to understand how much capital we have that we haven't saved for and maintained and need to replace. And then we have to determine the capital we have now, the new capital and what we have to put in. So we're trying to do a better job right now of all the capital we need now, putting money away for replacement. But we really have a gap of of stuff we don't know. We don't know what we don't know. So when I get asked about what we need to put in reserves and I still have a quite a gap of knowledge of of what we need to do. So I kind of go on like a general knowledge and understanding of what I need to do. You know, as far as based on history and training and understanding. But there are no parameters. So hopefully next year, we can put in a really concerted effort on that 10-year plan, bring it back. And and really fine tune that funding strategy that we have. And and my hope would be, I tried to commit last year to this year to to doing a strategy like a policy. But because of lack of resources, I wasn't able to do that. I'd really like to try and achieve that next year, even if it's a general overarching reserve policy. So no, it's on on my docket of of things to bring up and discuss, probably again with the finance committee. And and I'll go from there. So the bar, I thought this would just be interesting. This is where that 1.6 million is coming from. And then we have pooled investment funds. So something tidbit that we don't typically talk about is where our investments are sitting. So we have a high interest investment in our bank, but we also deal with MFA investments and the amount that we have. It's kind of spread all over, but a large portion of it is held within MFA investment funds. We have a schedule and it breaks down all the different municipalities and all the loans that they take out. But one of the words of advice from one of the directors at MFA was by the time the debt request comes to the TNRD board, they've already approved the bylaw. So sometimes it looks like political suicide if you try and stop it when it comes to the table, although it is a board prerogative. Typically, the debt that other municipalities request comes here, gets stamped and it goes forward because MFA is the branch that actually makes sure, like your bank, when you go to get a loan, they look at all the parameters and and everything that they need to do to make sure that they're okay to borrow. The one note that she did say is you should pay attention in areas where there's natural disasters that have wiped out towns or communities or things like that where there is a good possibility that they can't repay future debt or there's uncertainty about about that area. So just a tidbit of information I wanted to share. The surplus summary. So again, I'm just going to look here. Surplus, page 35, 36, if you're going through. So what I wanted to do here, and it was our best attempt, we we talked with the finance committee a bit about this. And there was a bit of a desire to, and I felt through budget deliberations last year, there was lots of questions and comments about the the level in our surplus. And what I can say is we did make concerted efforts last year. So I'm going to jump forward here. If you look, there was $6 million of surplus carry forward, just a reminder. You budget a million dollars, you spend $800,000, $200,000 of that is considered a surplus. That is legislatedly has to be brought forward as revenue in the next year. The board certainly could decide where that surplus goes. We have tried to make efforts to transfer a lot of that to the reserve where it was tagged as capital. We did not do an exercise to go through again every service and check with the board if they liked our strategy. But we did, I did push all the departments to reduce expenditures if we were just had buffers in there that was coming through a surplus. Some of the the misinformation though is, you know, surplus was bad and and we were doing a disservice to taxpayers. It's not true, like the surplus has to come forward. So if you had $200,000 worth of surplus that was carried forward to the next year, you no longer need a million dollars worth of tax. You only need $800,000 worth of tax. So your taxpayers are getting it back. It's not being overspent, but it was just a practice that perception is not great. So we're trying to make sure that we manage our expenditures within 10% of our operating budget. And if it's coming in outside of that, why is that? One area, you know, we knew, Planning and Development Services, they have, you know, it should be 235,000, they've got 461, they're over there. But we we knew in Development Services that we were getting excess revenue. And they, it wasn't over, it wasn't over budgeting expenses. They were actually spending pretty close to budget on expenses. But they were getting three times the amount of revenue. So they had extra surplus. And they made a decision that because of the economic times, if if that just bottoms out, we still have to maintain operations. And then a decision would come to the board and say, do you want to maintain operations with this economic downturn or do you want to change the service level? So we have to bring bring that question, but we can't just all of a sudden, you know, drop a million dollars worth of revenue and and that can happen there. So it does fluctuate quite a bit there. There's, there's some that were, you know, out of alignment somewhat. But what I would encourage is if you're truly concerned about the the surplus, go through these, see where the larger amounts of surplus are coming through. What I can warn you is that because that surplus drops and we're now at 4.6 projected surplus, right away, if we didn't reduce, taxes are going up. So we tried to do our due diligence and and manage that where we could. And, you know, my hope is we we just continually come in around the 4 million mark if that is 10% of our operating. And I think that from my perspective is reasonable. I'm not going to go through this line by line, but I did want to entertain if if there was any concerns or conversation. I just wanted you to know what we've done to really try and address the concerns.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Director Grigné?
So Director Fox, the heading on the second to the right column was 10%. Yeah, there it is, 10% allowable surplus. So could you just walk us through an example of of the process where you're saying, I think you said, if we budgeted a million bucks and we only had 800,000, we have a $200,000 surplus, I get that. It would say to me, the next year we should be, if 800,000 was the cost of that department and we thought that was a stabilized revenue stream, we should be budgeting $80,000 as a surplus. But we have $200,000 of the surplus from that one year. What happens to the $120,000? Does it go back to the taxpayer or does it go into a surplus fund? That's sort of where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you Chair. I'm going to, hopefully I visually pictured this in my mind, but when there's a surplus and it's carried forward as revenue and we reduce taxation, right there, we're saying we're operating still at a million dollars. If the surplus continues year over year, if every year for five years, you have a $200,000 surplus, you're over budgeting your expenses. I can't say that right now. I can't make good decisions because capital was embedded in operating. So give us another year. We've already dropped over $2 million. Give us another year. We'll try and bring that again into more alignment when I have more I can compare to for consistency. But but just remember, I'm looking for a trend. And then if we're continually showing a surplus, then yeah, well, I'm pushing them to reduce their amount of expenditures that they're spending. If we think we can operate at less, we've reduced our expenditures where where we can make that. Let's say that, you know, we are operating at at the now the 800,000 and this 200,000 is truly surplus. We then are either increasing our expenses, which typically isn't happening, or transferring that now to a reserve. So you would see an additional line to transfer it to the reserve and the tax should come down. And the money should go sit in the reserve and we shouldn't need that year over year. What I've done at this point to try and keep the tax rate stable is we've just instead of we, I kind of capitalized on the situation where we have now a 10-year financial or capital plan that needs funding. So if there was surplus being brought forward year over year and they were kind of using that as a reserve, I just did a transfer to reserve year over year, now moving that excess in there so that the tax line stayed the same. You no longer have a surplus, the excess money is going into your reserve fund bucket. If you didn't need that, you're going to see that through the the capital plan. But those are some of the things that that we've kind of done. Absolutely. Again, this could be an exercise where the board wants to see every surplus and what we've done with it. We certainly could do that. Right now, you don't have that opportunity. You're getting the surplus coming in and where we've deemed the operating expenses are good. And if we want to keep the tax rate stable, we've kept it stable because we need those reserves to fund the capital plan. We're not trying to do it to create excess and burden the taxpayer.
Thank you for that. So I was speaking at the break with one of the counselor or one of the directors in the at the City of Canlis and they've got a committee that they've looked at to come back with policy on surplus reserves, that kind of thing. You've talked about that before the break as well. And I would just simply say that maybe the finance committee could look at this more in depth and then come back with a recommendation to the board about surpluses and and policies. Because if the city of Canlis has got a surplus policy, I think we should come up with at least our surplus policy. Is 10% right? Is 15% right? Is putting excess money into a surplus fund right? Is giving it back to the taxpayer right? Right, is giving it back to the taxpayer, right? I think if the, if the finance committee can work with uh the staff to come up with a recommendation, that would. Probably uh be the expedient way to do it.
Thank you, Chair, through to the board. So what I would encourage is if it's uh something new that you want us to do, you get support of the board. And then it can be managed through the finance committee. But what I, what I want to make sure we're not doing is using the finance committee to direct additional resources. From staff to be used on something we're not currently doing. So just that differentiation, so. Spending time on the surpluses and going through the reserves does require. Um, additional time and resources that currently isn't worked in. If that is a direction the board would like. That would be something to get their support on so that the finance committee is just not working off their own. Uh, I guess directive and directing that kind of work. I just want to be very cognizant of that. And I mean, certainly. Uh, Scott, you can comment on that.
I'm I'm in full agreeance. That's the process we need to take. The board is gonna need to help us with that and uh direct us accordingly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this moment? And we will have a time for, we should be getting close to that for just general comments, looking at what's in the parking lot. And deciding where we go from here.
Thank you, Chair Roden. So, yeah, I'm just gonna wrap it up here. So please um. Take advantage of the new tools we've given you to talk to your C O's. Um, especially the municipal directors, because you don't get as much one-on-one time with us. If they really don't know the value that we bring, uh, and we want to help you communicate with your constituents, so certainly send them our way. Uh, and we will meet with the municipal directors as well. Please remember that this is, this has been a real achievement of hard work. Um, in twenty twenty-five, your tax increase used to jump up to twenty twenty-five and no one put it up on the board and we didn't talk about it. So I did the same thing last year. Like, okay, we've we've got this plan, we've got the strategy, the expenses are the same, it's really the surplus causing the issue. But we put a lot of work in here to make sure this was a five-year outlay that you could endorse. Uh, even because I think the hardest thing you have to do and what has always come back to me is, well, we can't support all these increases in the future, we don't want eight percent. Look, you supported twenty-five percent last year, so I'm bringing you something back that's reasonable and next year we'll go through this all again. And bring you something that's more reasonable. This is just. A consistent target that we're trying to achieve. So I just, I want you to remember. That thi- this isn't set in stone, it'll change. You never focused on it before. I really tried to give you something that you could stand behind. Um, it shows you, we don't talk about the global tax increase being seven percent tax increase. I don't want that. When the radio phones me and asks me, it's not like a municipality. You are all gonna see different increases. So the tax requisitions we require went up by seven percent. The expenses went up by five point nine percent. You can talk about those numbers, but go to your own areas and look for your percentage increases there. Um, I'm gonna leave it at that and uh I know that there's um. Well, we'll see if there's any last little questions. We have a parking lot, um. Not people didn't directly say, I've got some things in here that I know people wanted to kind of address outside of the normal and I'll check in with Greg to see if he's picked up on anything else. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you on behalf of everyone, CFO Fox and your staff for this very comprehensive report. Thank you for this opportunity for us all to sit down and ask you questions. And uh, looking forward to, well, I shouldn't say I'm looking forward to the next meeting in December, but I think it will make that meeting in December. Much easier for everyone having had this opportunity today. So thank you very much for all the hours of work. That you and your staff and all the staff have put into pulling this together for the benefit of those of us who may not be quite so budget conscious. Or numbers conscious, let's put it that way. All right, uh, Mr. Lois, do we have anything? In the parking lot that we need to get out there so that people know what's already parked? Is that a thing? I don't know.
Thank you, Chair. So as you can see, we were just having a fun staff uh check-in. Um, so the only real issues that, I mean, the only time parking lot issues were specifically raised was um library reserve issues. And if there was any further discussion you wanted to have on that point. And then I know there was um at least one other issue that staff um uh thoughts could be raised at some point today and that relates to issues around Gold Country. That um essentially uh that service, that is a service that the T N I D has provided in the past and is in the process of basically. Coming to an end due to all participants uh withdrawing from it, well. Almost all participants withdrawing from it, certainly at the T N I D level, there's a couple of municipalities that have not yet made resolutions. And so that remains something of an open question for us.
All right, so we're gonna open it up to comments, questions, suggestions. Just a reminder that if you see something in the budget. Or the five-year plan that you feel needs to be changed and it's fairly minor. We, fairly minor, we can pass it. And I have this from the corporate officer who's the the legal here. That a a nod of assent for most people will do it. If it is substantial at all, then we will require a motion with a mover and a seconder. So, all right, I see Director Grenier, I'm just, give me a moment while I write down, Director Grenier, Director Laird. Any other hands, Director O'Reilly and Sarai? Anyone else? All right, that'll do to get on with. So we'll start with Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, in our meeting, we discussed uh the transfer stations, our E A meeting. And um, uh, there, just for the benefit of the board, there happens to be four transfer stations that in two thousand and eight. Were charged separately to uh E A's rather than part of the solid waste committee. Um, and uh, this, this came about uh in a conversation and uh we've discussed it, so I'll just uh. Uh, asked Mr. Vera to comment on it and depending on what the board feels, I would ask that uh. Board ultimately consider the transfer stations in J, N, and P. Go to the solid waste management committee and be treated like all the other transfer stations, but uh. Uh, perhaps we could hear from Mr. Vera.
Uh, thanks. So through the chair, yeah, just a bit more background in uh to, when the. Board adopted the two thousand and eight solid waste management plan, it was a pretty dramatic change that involved. Closure of a number of landfills, replacing them with eco depots. Um, going to a user pay system, so it was a major shift and among that was a number of. Uh, the recommendation the board approved to reduce the number of overall transfer stations to reduce operating costs. Um, the board made a decision to, and I'm actually still doing the research on this since our last discussion, but close about ten transfer stations. Um, four of those did not close and were instead. Um, shifted to an electoral area service funded specifically by the electoral area. So operationally, they operate as part of our um regional solid waste contracts, but they're funded separately. Um, through an electoral area only service. So those electoral areas that have this service, their residents pay towards. Operation of these select four transfer stations, um, as well as into the regional service.
Thank you, Director Laird.
Uh, I was lucky enough in two thousand and eight to be the chair of the committee that was looking after uh. Starting out expenditures on our solid waste. Uh, the projections were quite horrendous as if we kept doing it the same way we were doing it. Uh, it got to be, I'm sure Jamie can back me up on this, but uh, there was no. Um, I think at that time we were around a ten or a twelve million dollar budget and the projections were, it would just keep getting higher. So one of the decisions that was made was to close transfer stations. That the board went through and decided weren't necessary anymore. And the area directors that decided that they they were important to their areas took them on as a. An expense directly to their area, like a specified area charge. And uh, I think a lot of things have changed since then. And I do feel that the area directors that have been carrying that. Uh, charge for all these years, uh, should have the opportunity. For the board to decide whether I think they should actually become part of our solid waste management plan now. It was a very interesting committee, especially when you had every area and you told them they were loo- losing their. Facility. So anyway, that was just some history.
Thank you, Director Laird, uh, Director O'Reilly, and then I have Director Sarai.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, comment and then a question, I guess. The first comment being. Uh, CFO Fox, as much as I spoke about this being our first true budget, this is your first first true budget. And there was definitely a a stamp of of your way of presenting this and and really appreciated it. It it was laid out differently, but I think for the better. Um, and so I appreciate you going through this and you were um. You knew everything that that was on there and there was no question marks uh with what you're presenting. So that was uh fantastic to see. My question is just regarding around fees and I think it was five and a half or six million. My laptop died, so I don't have it in my my notes in front of me anymore. Um, but is there, based on regional districts, a percentage based on? How much should be covered by fees out of a a total budget? Is there an average or something we should be striving towards? When I look at the city of Kamloops, just as an example, because I know it better. Uh, development services typically tries to go for a zero percent taxation. So if essentially all of it's covered by fees. Our recreational facilities have a fifty-fifty cost recovery, fifty percent taxation. And I mean arenas and pools have different, but we strive for about a fifty-fifty. Is there, should we be looking at that, at at looking at changing fee structures or is that something that is even done? At a regional district level because it is a lot more uh unique than a municipality? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, through to the directors and Director O'Reilly. Oh, first clarification, um, are you referring to just all fees in general, not just a specific area, correct? Okay, so there is different fees and charges bylaws set up that kind of dictate the fees to the different services. I'm not as familiar and I'll I'll look to um Jamie. For if there's some specific parameters around cost recovery, I know that they. They have and in development services, we we have a certain level of cost recovery that we're trying to achieve. I just don't actually know if that's uh in the the policy. What I do know from my experience. Is the the municipalities tend to define their cost recovery a little bit better and. And I I don't know if it's because of the spread out or the number of directors. They seem to get neglected here as far as keeping up with maybe what the fees should be. We really try to balance. Oh, can they afford it? And and we were, not that that's not important. It just seems like a little bit more of a feeling-based exercise. Um, and I certainly uh would hope that there's there's direction within the policy. I'm gonna stop there. Uh, basically, I'm not a hundred percent sure of all the policies that we have.
Director Sarai?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make it quick because I know everybody wants to go home and and I I just want to thank, sorry.
Sure. Mr. Vera, I believe, wants to weigh on this, in on this.
Sorry, I will, I will chime in on that, just uh, uh, because I think it was kind of a two-part question from Director Riley, um. I I think it's a, it would be a good exercise to review and have some direction around fee. Fee recovery and how much per department that we're looking to recover through fees versus taxation. Um, but I also think the the question was related to, you know, how what what's fee recovery look like in other regional districts? Um, I, even though we could do that, I would suggest that's. It really depends on the type of service and our cost to do the service. Like I'll use solid waste, for example, I know that. North Orkinogan Regional District has zero taxation because they receive enough fees because they only operate one landfill and I think. Two or three transfer stations, so it's a very different model. But I think the exercise of looking at the budget and saying this is currently how we're funded. For between fees and taxation and ultimately, really the the board's making this decision on a year-by-year basis, this is the split. Between fees and taxation. Again, I'll use solid waste as an example. The budget is more or less thirty percent we're planning to get from fees and seventy percent from taxation. But that's not, as you were suggesting, that's not set in policy, but we just kind of are continuing to present that as our target in in the budget, but.
Great, thank you. And supplemental that, and the reason I bring it up is just we went through at the city of Kamloops a year ago and. And we realized there was some changes higher and lower and we just sort of went through it, so I was just put that out while we have it in front of us today, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Sarai.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll make it quick because we know everybody wants to get home. I just need some clarification on. Development Engineering Department. When we talked about the zero percent increase, did that include just not the permits coming in? Um, on variances or rezones, but did that also include a zero percent increase on D C Cs that are out on the. Uh, subdivisions that we're, the the board's paying for upgrades for new subdivisions?
Through the chair, and so in regional districts, we we don't have, we don't collect. Development cost charges in the same way as the municipality, so I think we only have one D C C bylaw in Blue River. So we don't have that um income like a municipality. Um, so yeah, I'm not sure if that answers it, yeah.
Doesn't, and just on Director O'Reilly saying, I think the fifty-fifty split with recreation, I think we should also include. T N R D is big on, you know, in charge of libraries. To me, your library is a recreation, people go to read books and. I don't think it should be a a money-making, i- i- it should be an investment in a recreation facility, so that's just my opinion on that.
Thank you, Director Laird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions when we had our um. One-on-one with as an E A director, um, community parks and economic development came up. And I was just wondering, when we were, uh, the discussion had was around the fact that we would. Probably look at what we're gonna do with community parks and how we're gonna handle economic development. How do I go about getting that on the future agenda? You know, there's gonna have to be some. Uh, staff time put in to get the um plan put together. Do I, do I allow staff to do that and bring it forward to us?
I suspect the best idea would be to speak with staff and see whether that needs to become uh forward as a notice of motion, although I see Mr. Vera has his hands up, so perhaps he can answer.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. Uh, that's on plan for the Electoral Area Directors Meeting on November twenty-third, that we're gonna bring that report and discussion. Um, the reason it's going to that meeting is um Director Laird is referring to the. Economic development budgets that are specific to the electoral areas and only electoral areas pay into it. So there'll be a discussion about how to use uh that budget and and that function and the future of that function going forward.
Are community parks on on gonna come up to any directors meeting as well at some time?
Uh, yes, the regional parks strategy, if you remember the committee, the whole discussion around a regional parks uh strategy, there's a report coming to the board. Uh, December fourteenth board meeting around that. And that's around the whether the board wants us to pursue an actual full park strategy and what that would look like, so that discussion's happening in December.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments, questions? I've got Director Grenier and then I believe CEO Hildebrand has a couple of things he wants to address.
Uh, thank you, Chair. A small item, we talked about it, the E A Mammoth Lake, we talked about it with uh, with um. Uh, Mayor Logan Lake and Director Laird, uh, we're not sure about the status of the Mammoth Lake. Coverage and whether it's still relevant, so if you could. Take that and let us know whether it's still relevant to our areas, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Hildebrand.
Uh, thank you, Chair Roden, to the board. Just some quick updates, um, based on what was said here today. Thank you for all your uh, your uh attention to this massive presentation and I, I really appreciate all the questions. Um, one thing is I know, Director Grenier, you brought up the um, the comment right at the beginning here about. Wanting staff to look into the transfer stations and the history, Director Laird also brought it up. I believe that's coming as a notice of motion tomorrow to the board. Um, and then that'll go to the twenty-third to be debated, so it just so that the the group knows that we are working on that one and it'll come to the board to be debated on next steps. Uh, number two, we mentioned Gold Country, um, and just for those that just need a refresher. Uh, that bylaw has been in place for quite a while. We've had um all the participants withdraw. And provide a a year's notice in order to withdraw with the exception of two, and I believe that's. Uh, the village of Cash Creek or Cash Creek and Litten are the two that still would be uh. Need to make a decision on what they would like to do. From what I've heard is they may want to do something on their own, but we would need to decide what we need to do as a T N R D because that bylaw is in place, but. We will bring it back to the board before the end of the year, so a decision can be made. And then finally, I know the library discussion caught me off guard, Director Raines, I just wanted to apologize, we didn't have the information uh at our fingertips. We do have that information now, uh, based on why we made that decision to include uh Sun Peaks and most of that came from. Uh, the survey that was sent out and. uh, the survey that was sent out and um, Ms. Bramzik is going to present that tomorrow and share the details on why we made that, that decision. Um, and why we didn't expect it is it's typically an operational decision on how that schedule works, but we bring it to the board for information, but we will bring some, a more fulsome um, set of information and data on how we came up with that decision tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for CFO Fox? Or any staff members? Staff members, stop glaring at me. All right, all right, and I call a third and final time for any questions or comments to Ms. Fox. Although it's not as if you can't speak to her anytime. No. Thank you very much again to you and your staff, all staff for uh this very fulsome report, this opportunity. I, I think a lot of people really welcomed it. And uh, I don't always welcome the right word. Anyway, thank you very much and thank you all and we will see you all tomorrow. We sit adjourned.
Chair, Chair Roden? Chair Roden? Chair Roden?
Uh-oh. Was I, was I too eager? What? All right, sorry, everyone got really excited there. We have one more item of business to conduct. No, no. Hopefully a ten-second one. We need to, someone to move the recommendation to accept the draft budget. I heard Director O'Reilly, I believe, and Director Sarai seconded it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, opposed if any, that's carried. Thank you. All right, now you can go.
No.